To the Afghanistan War Commission’s hearing. I’m Shmila Chowdhury, the co-chair, and I’m joined today by my co-chair and colleague, Dr. Colin Jackson. And on behalf of our fellow commissioners, I welcome everyone to our third public hearing. Today’s hearing examines the U.S. decision to initiate a major military and civilian surge in Afghanistan from 2009 to 2012. By late 2008, the Taliban had regained momentum in Afghanistan’s south and east. The group had capitalized on governance failures and growing public disillusionment in Afghanistan. It also benefited from access to cross-border sanctuaries in Pakistan. Afghan institutions remained fragile at this time. The Karzai government faced widespread allegations of corruption and had limited reach outside urban centers. U.S.-Pakistan cooperation, though rooted in shared counterterrorism goals, was shaped by diverging strategic priorities, especially around the Taliban, India, and regional balance. These tensions complicated efforts to address safe havens and broader stability in the region. In response, the Obama administration commissioned a policy review that diagnosed the war as under-resourced and lacking strategic coherence. That review led to the surge, an escalation in both troop levels and civilian presence aimed at reversing Taliban momentum and creating space for Afghan political consolidation. This moment demands closer scrutiny, not just as a shift in U.S. strategy, but as a deeply consequential human commitment. This period marked the largest deployment of American personnel in the entire war. Studying it is a moral imperative. It reflects the height of U.S. investment in the war, and we must ask, what did this commitment achieve? What did it cost? And what did it ultimately produce? The surge was not an anomaly. It followed a familiar pattern in U.S. interventions, from Vietnam to Iraq, where large-scale deployments were launched without fully aligning political goals, timelines, and institutional capacity. This raises a series of enduring strategic questions. First, what were the core objectives of the surge? And did agencies share a coherent understanding of them? Second, was the political strategy to stabilize Afghanistan adequately dwelled and resourced? Critics point to a prioritization of military tactics over political stabilization. If so, was this due to U.S. and Afghan bureaucratic dysfunction or a deeper uncertainty about achievable outcomes? Third, how did the regional security environment, especially Pakistan’s role, factor into planning? To what extent was cross-border sanctuary addressed or absorbed into strategy? Fourth, what assumptions shaped U.S. views of Afghan partner capacity? The 2021 collapse calls into question whether those assessments were realistic or influenced by operational optimism. Fifth, how did time constraints impact implementation? Announcing both a surge and a withdrawal timeline compressed the window for results. Was this a political compromise or a strategic miscalculation? Sixth, how is dissent handled? Did the system allow internal warnings to influence policy, or were they sidelined? And finally, how did metrics shape perceptions of success? Tactical indicators, like troops trained or districts cleared, were often treated as proxies for strategic progress. Were those assumptions tested? These questions are not just about the past. They inform how the U.S. approaches security assistance, counterinsurgency, and stabilization today in Ukraine, Africa, and elsewhere. The surge in Afghanistan is more than a policy moment. It’s a strategic inflection point. Understanding its logic and consequences is vital for future decision-making. As a bipartisan, independent body, the Afghanistan War Commission is uniquely positioned to examine these issues because of our access to official records, institutional memory, and a wide range of expertise. We’ve said this often as a commission, but it’s worth repeating again today, that our goal is not to assign blame, but to understand clearly and systematically how decisions were made, what shaped them, and what lessons they hold for the future. And as global challenges evolve from Eastern Europe to the Middle East, the dilemmas we are studying remain highly relevant today. And I’ll just add, off-script, as I was driving in this morning, I drove past the National Archives. There’s two statues outside. Each one has a phrase etched in stone in front of them. One says, “What is past is prologue,” and the second one says, “Study the past.” So let this just be a reminder to all of us that warnings about the present and not thinking about the lessons of the past are amongst us in our daily lives. So lest we forget, you know, this is, these are issues that we should constantly be talking about, not just in a special hearing. And we hope that our work is a reminder of that need, and that strategic clarity and institutional learning are essential. They’re not optional for sound policy. So with that, I’ll turn things over to my co-chair, Dr. Colin Jackson.
Thank you, Shmila, and thank you to our commissioners. It’s wonderful to have assembled such a gifted, knowledgeable set of witnesses to help us examine what was, in many ways, the zenith of the American war. Our hearing today focuses on this zenith of the American war, the 2009 to 2011 period commonly referred to as the Afghanistan Surge. A war that started with the overthrow of the Taliban and the pursuit of al-Qaeda had evolved into two conjoined wars. One was waged inside the borders of Afghanistan to erect an Afghan state and to turn back the Taliban insurgency that threatened it. The second waged largely outside of Afghanistan was a war against al-Qaeda. By the end of the Bush administration, the trends in both wars were negative. The Taliban had rebounded to threaten the Afghan state, and core al-Qaeda remained intact and capable of mounting external attacks. The looming crises in both wars forced the incoming administration to reassess U.S. strategy. The Obama administration’s debates, decisions, and implementation changed the course of the war by embracing a new set of ends, ways, and means. Inside Afghanistan, the United States launched a population-centric counterinsurgency campaign to reverse the momentum of the Taliban. Military operations were supported by more aggressive state-building, security force assistance, and economic development. Elsewhere in the region, the United States increased the intensity of the counterterrorism campaign to defeat core al-Qaeda. The U.S. also sought to persuade Pakistan to take the steps necessary to ensure success in both campaigns. The surge also marked the peak of U.S. means. U.S. troop levels reached 110,000 by 2011. Other departments and agencies pushed to deploy more civilian advisers, and the administration increased investments and authorities to pursue counterterrorism. It also marked the peak of U.S. losses. 1,120 military service members were killed in action between 2009 and 2011, over 60% of the military fatalities of the entire war. Eighteen months after the announcement of the surge, the administration began to withdraw forces. By the end of 2011, the United States’ counterterrorism campaign had broken the back of core al-Qaeda. Osama bin Laden had been killed, and the core al-Qaeda organization was near operational defeat. The results in the war against the Taliban and on behalf of the Afghan state were less certain. While U.S. counterinsurgency had reduced violence in some areas, the impact on violence was more modest than the turnaround in Iraq, and there was little consensus on the permanence of those gains in the face of rapid troop withdrawals. The Afghan state remained heavily dependent on the West, and the lasting effects of security force development, institution building, and economic development remained unclear. Our examination of the surge today will be divided into two parts. The first will focus on the surge debates and the major Washington decisions that flowed from them. The second will address the steps taken by leaders in Afghanistan to implement those policies. At the time and in retrospect, the surge debates raise first-order questions. Why was the surge necessary? How had the Taliban rebound and the survival of al-Qaeda forced a reevaluation of U.S. policy and strategy? What combination of ways—counterinsurgency, counterterrorism, state-building, economic development, or negotiations—was most appropriate to the problems of fixing the Afghan state, rolling back the Taliban, and defeating al-Qaeda? And how much was enough in terms of troops, money, and time? What did our allies and partners—NATO, the Afghan government, and Pakistan—think of our strategic choices, and what actions did they take in response? The civil-military debates over how much and how long loom largest. Military leaders assumed that Taliban gains demanded some dramatic level of escalation in troop numbers, but they were keenly aware that the political appetite for escalation was finite. It remains unclear whether they asked for the full magnitude of resources and time they considered necessary to roll back the Taliban and fix the Afghan state, or whether they sought to secure the maximum troops and time they felt that the political market of 2009 could bear. Civilian leaders in turn suspected the military might be padding force and time requirements, and this likely contributed to distrust of later estimates of progress and recommendations to extend the surge. After 2009, the implementation of the surge was left largely to U.S. leaders in Afghanistan. General McChrystal, Ambassador Eichenberry, and their successors made an array of decisions about the conduct of that campaign. If the surge was the apex of interagency investment, it was also the peak of interagency coordination challenges. As Robert Comer observed in Vietnam, bureaucracies did their thing. Aggressive and well-intentioned efforts by one arm of the U.S. government were often in tension with the efforts of others. All U.S. actors struggled to assist the Afghan people without inadvertently displacing the Afghan state they sought to promote. With the benefit of hindsight, we can ask a second set of questions. What did the surge accomplish? How well did we understand or explain progress at the time or in retrospect? Why were there disagreements over progress in Afghanistan between military leaders and the intelligence community? To what extent were disagreements a matter of particular metrics? And to what extent were they a reflection of the intrinsic difficulty of measuring and projecting progress in any counterinsurgency? How did we understand the durability of progress in the counterinsurgency and state-building efforts? How do you know what you have accomplished and when you are done? Under what circumstances, and at what magnitude, and at what duration is population-centric counterinsurgency likely to succeed? A focus on the decisions to surge in 2009 and withdraw the surge in 2011 inevitably raised the question of the paths not taken. Were there viable superior alternatives to the surge in 2009? How significant was the decision to announce publicly the end date of the surge? Would a decision to hold—or even withdraw—in 2009 have produced superior outcomes from the American point of view? What were the merits of the Biden Cartwright Counterterrorism Plus proposal? Had the United States embarked on negotiations with the Taliban in 2009, what settlement terms might have been secured in such a process? If the United States was frustrated in its ability to compel Pakistan to eliminate Taliban sanctuary, what could the United States have done differently? Even if we hold the Washington decisions constant, would different decisions in Kabul or the field have changed the effectiveness of the counterinsurgency or state-building campaigns? Finally, would a decision to extend the surge beyond 2011 have made a substantial difference in defeating the Taliban or fixing the Afghan state? Finally, our examination of the surge highlights the seminal importance and enormous difficulty of learning from experience. The work of this commission is predicated on the notion that current and future leaders can and should derive insights from our costly experience in Afghanistan and apply them to current and future interventions. But we would do well to recall that the enthusiasm for a surge in Afghanistan was itself a reflection of the perceived success of the earlier surge in Iraq. In seeking to replicate that feat in Afghanistan, we assumed that we understood the origins of the turnaround in Iraq and that similar strategies could produce equally positive outcomes. The success of the war on al-Qaeda and the less marked results in the war on the Taliban should remind us that effective learning is a process of applying general insights to specific problems. In the business of intervention, there are many established tools and strategies, but few universal theorems. As we seek to transmit the lessons of Afghanistan to a future generation, we should remind them of the need to assess the validity of those insights and their fit to the particular problems they encounter in the future.
Thank you, Co-Chair Jackson. We’ll now begin our first panel. This panel focuses on the policy review and strategic debates that led to President Obama’s 2009 decision to surge in Afghanistan. It was a pivotal moment when two parallel wars—the fight against the Taliban inside Afghanistan and the counterterrorism campaign against al-Qaeda beyond its borders—both reached their peak. As such, we must explore the connection between the surge and the broader U.S. counterterrorism campaign and our relationship with Pakistan. We’re joined by a distinguished group of witnesses who were closely involved in decision-making at the time in both U.S. and Afghan governments. They will help us understand how decisions were made, alternative strategies were weighed, and why some views carried more influence than others in senior-level deliberations. I’ll ask my co-chair to introduce the witnesses, please.
Our first witness today is Ambassador Doug Lute. He was initially appointed by President Bush in 2007. Ambassador Lute served as the Deputy National Security Advisor for Iraq and Afghanistan under President Obama as well, maintaining that role until 2013, when he was appointed U.S. Ambassador to NATO. Welcome, Ambassador Lute. Oh, continue. Okay, I’ll introduce all of our witnesses first here. Our next witness, Mr. David Sedney, held the role of Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense for Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Central Asia from 2009 until 2013. Participating via Zoom for this meeting is Ambassador Jawad Ludin, who served as Afghanistan’s Ambassador to Canada from 2009 to 2012, during which time he remained closely engaged with Afghan President Hamid Karzai. He had previously served as President Karzai’s Chief of Staff and, in 2011, assumed the role of Deputy Foreign Minister, in which he had direct visibility into political dynamics as the surge was underway. Our next witness, Ambassador Carl Eichenberry, served as U.S. Ambassador to Afghanistan from 2009 to 2011, a culmination of almost four decades of national service. Our final witness for this panel, retired Lieutenant General Mike Nagata of the United States Army, was the deputy chief in the Office of ODRP, the Office of Defense Representative at the United States Embassy in Islamabad, Pakistan, from 2009 to 2011. I yield back.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, we have a lot of expertise on this panel, so I am—I know everyone is eager. Our commissioners are very eager, as am I, to move to the questions section, so I’ll ask each witness to limit their remarks to five to seven minutes. For the audience, the witness statements have been submitted for the record. They are longer and more detailed in written testimony, so feel free to reference those after the hearing. So Ambassador Lute, you are recognized for five to seven minutes for your opening statement. Please.
Okay, thanks very much. And thanks to the entire commission for this opportunity to appear before you today and discuss, in particular, the period of the surge. I’ll limit my comments to the broader context in which the surge decisions were taken, but also offer some observations—not yet lessons, but observations about my experience during that time. So first, the broader context. I actually applaud the commission’s broad and deep remit to examine U.S. involvement in Afghanistan over the full 20 years and four presidential administrations. This comprehensive scope of examination and reflection presents an opportunity to make a real, if painful, contribution to enrich our understanding in the national security experience this episode represents. Our unsatisfying withdrawal from Afghanistan may have happened in 2021, but it did not result from the 20 weeks or even 20 months that led up to those planes rumbling down the tarmac for the last time. Rather, it was the cumulative effect of 20 years of trial and error. Despite all our efforts, all the sacrifices of our nation, our NATO allies and partners, and most significantly, the Afghan people, we were unable to build an Afghan state able to sustain itself in relative peace, win legitimacy among the Afghan people, and thrive in the community of nations. We need to understand why. There’s been a tendency, in some retrospectives, to confine the look at the U.S. role on the ground in Afghanistan narrowly—that is, only to what the U.S. military and civilian agencies did in Afghanistan itself. The full story, however, must include a sober look at the broader picture—the role of regional players, especially Pakistan, the attitudes and politics of our European allies, the growing problem of Russia, the capabilities and mindset in Washington, in our military, intelligence community, State Department, and other agencies, and ultimately, the executive branch’s ability to integrate all these elements into a coherent whole through the policymaking processes across four presidential administrations. Only such a deep and broad examination will render a full understanding of how our involvement in Afghanistan ended as it did. Now, I have a set of five observations. Because of time limits, I won’t go into them in detail. They very much parallel the classic definition of strategy as the alignment of ends, ways, and means over time. So that’s the sort of organizing principle of my observations, and, again, I’ll just outline these and leave the rest for the record. I think the roots of our failure in Afghanistan were not at the tactical level. I think they were at the strategic level. And by strategic level, I mean decisions taken here in Washington, the strategic capital, and how we made those decisions—the surge is a good example—but equally important then how we oversaw the implementation of those decisions. So let me just quickly tick through these observations, and then, as quickly as possible, we can move to your questions. First of all, when setting our national goals, the strategic ends, we must have a realistic picture of what would be possible in a specific setting. A deep understanding of the setting must be grounded in facts, not emotions, aspirations, or caricatures. We should apply a healthy dose of humility as to what is possible in places as complex and foreign as Afghanistan. That’s ends, ways. While our repeated strategic reviews and policy statements acknowledge the importance of emphasizing political and diplomatic approaches, we often relied mostly on military ways—military methods—rather than blending various methods into a mutually reinforcing whole. The best example here is that during the surge, we denied ourselves the potential value of reaching out to the Taliban diplomatically. Arguably, at a time when our military pressure was greatest, we were reluctant and hesitant and slow to complement that military approach with a diplomatic outreach—not because of the promise that we could solve the war diplomatically. This wasn’t about to end the war. But there was a significant potential assessed by our intelligence community that we could perhaps splinter the Taliban in a useful way, and therefore complement the counterinsurgency campaign on the ground—the military campaign—with a diplomatic approach, a diplomatic way, if you will. Means: Look, the short history of Afghanistan, in my view, is a strategic disconnect between ends—what we aim to do, which tend to be rather ambitious—and the resources, the means that we marshaled to actually accomplish those ends. So this strategic disconnect, I think, plagued us the entire 20 years. Fourth, in the execution phase, the strategy has to be constantly assessed and reassessed, or the alignment of ends, ways, and means falls out of alignment. And so things happen on the ground. Of course, famously, the enemy has a vote, but the status of al-Qaeda changed over time. What was happening in Pakistan was fluid. The reliability of the Afghan government as a partner changed over time. So there were a lot of conditions that were changing. My observation here—the fourth observation—is that we spent a lot of time making decisions, and that got a lot of bandwidth. We spent, in my view, too little time focused on where the rubber really meets the road in strategy, which is execution, implementation. And I think that deserves examination. And my fifth observation is that we should remember the strategic value of partners and allies. You know, it was on September 12, 2001, that the North Atlantic Council in Brussels voted that the attacks by al-Qaeda on Washington and New York the day before, September 11, actually triggered Article V—for the first and only time to this day, 76 years of NATO history, first and only time Article V has been triggered. We should remember that. And while we sometimes dismiss or diminish—even denigrate—the contribution of our allies, we should remember that they lost 1,000 troops in combat, and that, to the end, we had the benefit of tens of allies and partners serving alongside of us in Afghanistan. We did something right here in terms of bringing those together. And then finally, Madam Chair, every hearing breaks down at some point. Okay? It’s not always with the first witness.
Not at the beginning.
I always do what Shmila tells me. I just want to draw a distinction between these observations and lessons, right? Because in my view, you don’t actually have a lesson—or especially a lesson learned —until someone’s actually doing something with it. So changing organizational structures, processes, personnel assessments, and so forth. So it’s great to gather these observations, but that doesn’t equate to lessons learned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Lute. We do give out gold stars if you stick to the time period, so—I know you want that star, Doug. Mr. David Sedney, you are recognized for your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Co-chairs Chowdhury and Jackson, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity—
Please turn on your mic. We can’t hear you. Bring it closer.
Co-chairs Chowdhury and Jackson. Is it working? It says green.
I can’t—I can’t hear him.
Even closer? Is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can speak a little louder as well. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Co-chairs Chow—And I’ll remember this 30 seconds, too. Co-chairs Chowdhury and Jackson, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to testify on U.S. policymaking on Afghanistan from 2009 to 2011, a time of turning points and lost opportunities, a time of sacrifices and achievements, a time when our twin goals of destroying al-Qaeda and ensuring Afghanistan would never again be a safe haven for terrorists could still be achieved. I have worked on Afghanistan for over 23 years, at the State Department, the Defense Department, and the American University of Afghanistan in Kabul. I continue working on Afghanistan today. I have traveled across Afghanistan, met Afghans from every walk of life, and seen firsthand the sufferings the Afghan people have endured, their tremendous courage, their tremendous successes, and devastating failures. In this hearing, I will concentrate on just two years of my experience in Afghanistan, 2009 to 2011, when as Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense for Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Central Asia, I participated in formulating and implementing U.S. policy towards Afghanistan and Pakistan. I look forward to discussing with you in a classified setting the entirety of my work on Afghanistan and what lessons we should learn. I’m deeply aware of the sacrifices of American military and civilians who lost their lives in the war. I know that our nation cannot repay the sacrifices of those Americans wounded in the war nor the sacrifices of family members who bore the burdens that we, as a nation, asked of them. I’m equally conscious of the deaths and injuries of hundreds of thousands of Afghans and the millions of Afghans who remain refugees around the world. I know Afghans continue to suffer today and that things are likely to get worse. What happened over the course of the past 24 years in Afghanistan was not the result of any one factor, any one mistake, any one actor. Rather, what happened had many causes, all interrelated, some under the control of the U.S., some not. I want to stress that despite the focus of this commission and of the many books and articles on mistakes, defeats, and failures in Afghanistan, there were many, many successes—major successes—that are uncounted, rarely remembered in the U.S., and almost never described in the media. This commission will fail if you do not give sufficient attention to what went right, what was done better than expected, and on what actions and policies left lasting impacts that continue today. Ambassador Laberry, who’s on the next panel, describes one such success—civilian-military coordination in eastern Afghanistan—in her written testimony. There are many other successes, such as the military-civilian mission in the Argandab district in Afghanistan, a center of the Taliban’s existence. That operation changed the dynamics of that place until we left. These are successes that no one would have believed possible before 2009 and about which hardly anyone knows in 2025, but they’re key to learning some of the most important lessons from the Afghan experience of the U.S. I also want to stress that success in Afghanistan, consistently defined by the U.S. from 2001 through 2021 as the destruction of al-Qaeda and ensuring that Afghanistan would never again be a safe haven for terrorists, was achievable in 2001, was achievable in 2009, and remained achievable until President Trump’s disgraceful surrender agreement with— and remained achievable until President Trump's disgraceful surrender agreement with the Taliban in 2020 and President Biden's equally disgraceful, tragic withdrawal in 2021. U.S. policy toward Afghanistan, while it had many successes, also had many failures, many mistakes. These policies and failures, these policy failures, number one, and secondarily, failures in execution, made success less likely and harder as times progressed. These failures increased the number of lives lost, Afghans, Americans, and allies. They widened the destruction of Afghan society and, in many cases, strengthened those who were our enemies and, too often, took those who were neutral or our friends and turned them into enemies. These failures did not, did not include a failure in nation building because the United States never had a nation-building policy for Afghanistan. Many shallow analyses allege that we did nation building in Afghanistan. They are wrong. U.S. leaders, and I worked for them all, consistently refused to adopt a nation-building strategy such as those we embarked upon successfully in Japan and West Germany after World War II. While one can argue the U.S. should have adopted a nation-building strategy in Afghanistan, instead, we carried out bits and pieces of what such a strategy would have needed, giving false hopes to too many, but we held back from the full commitment that a real nation-building strategy would have required. The most important of our 2009 goals was changing Pakistan, and it was our most important failure. Changing the policy and actions about Pakistan from supporting the Taliban to opposing the Taliban was the linchpin of both of President Obama's two 2009 reviews. Encapsulated in the phrase "changing Pakistan's strategic calculus," which really became our mantra, changing Pakistan was a prerequisite for the success of the military and civilian surges of 2009. But when a 12-month review of the 2009 policy found no evidence of changes in Pakistan's policies and actions, President Obama did not change his policy, did not review or alter the withdrawal timetable, which was a strategic disaster in itself. He did not seek to alter the 2009 strategy in the face of a changed 2010 reality. Instead, President Obama held to his 18-month withdrawal timetable. He insisted that civilian and military personnel in the field achieve goals that became increasingly unrealistic, when a critical prerequisite is absent, failure ensues. The key to the failure of the U.S. policy decided in the 2009 Obama reviews was a failure of presidential leadership by President Obama. As a candidate and in his first days in office, President Obama supported a win in the good war in Afghanistan, and "win" and "good war" are both quotes that President Obama used at that time. He called for greater efforts there, but as he learned what those efforts were and what they cost, and as he faced difficult domestic choices, he changed his views, moving from support to ambivalence, and then finally to seeking an end at almost any cost to the U.S. part in the war. That is a prerogative of an elected president. But President Obama never described this change in his views to the American people, never explained himself publicly or to U.S. soldiers who went out and died. And he ended up continuing the war well past the time when he himself seemed to have lost belief. This strategic ambivalence at the top was, to me, the source of this strategic dissonance that bedeviled U.S. policymaking and implementation at the national level and below. Strategic dissonance from the top has a greater influence on events than implementation issues below. Personal and institutional rivalries in Washington led to similar dysfunctionality in Kabul. These tensions eroded our ability to make policy effectively and, in many cases, effectively eviscerated our ability to achieve key policy goals. On whether we could have succeeded, whether the Afghan people conceded, could have succeeded and not suffered defeat by the Taliban in 2021, I believe that if the Afghan people had the same level of consistent support and assistance from the U.S. as Pakistan provided to the Taliban, Afghanistan would have succeeded, and so too would the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedney. I'd like to turn now to Ambassador Ludeen, who is joining us via Zoom. He will appear on our screens over here. Welcome, Ambassador Ludeen. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. It's an honor to be able to participate and address this hearing today. Your mandate of learning lessons from America's 20-year-long intervention in Afghanistan is a noble one. By virtue of its power and influence, the United States is and will continue to be drawn into conflicts in far corners of the world. In fact, I wrote this sentence a few days ago, and today it rings differently a little bit when I read it, especially as I feel where I am in the Middle East. Are we on the brink of another war for the U.S.? I hope not. As an Afghan with experience of the great trade-offs that an American intervention brings, I hope your work will ensure that future interventions are better informed by lessons from the past. I'll make some introductory observations, and then look forward to your questions, there, Commissioners. At the strategic level, echoing very much the point that Ambassador Lude made, the war in Afghanistan ought not have been a war to begin with. Despite the imperative to go against al Qaeda in the legitimacy of its cause of belly, the massively asymmetric war against the Taliban could have been fought in one with little to no U.S. boots on the ground. What Afghanistan needed at the outset of 2001 intervention was a political strategy, one that would include fully Afghanizing the war, building up the Afghan state, and pursuing a regional approach to defeating terrorism in the Taliban insurgency. The manner in which the intervention unfolded, however, got this formula in reverse order, giving primacy to fighting the war, making political strategies subservient to the military effort. Rather than an end in itself, Afghan state building became an auxiliary project in the service of the American-led intervention. Here are a few examples of how this unfolded. Firstly, the war effort. Most non-Taliban Afghans in 2001 were fully aligned with the U.S. intervention and eager to do its bidding. With some training, equipment, and supervision from the U.S., we would easily have fully owned the war in one or two. But rather than Afghanizing the war at the outset, the U.S. decided to fight it on its own terms and largely by its own means. An obvious outcome of the strategy was an ill-conceived, poorly-informed, overly militarized, and unnecessarily heavy-handed approach to a low-intensity fight against the enemy that was little more than a ramshackle insurgency at the time. From night raids to drone strikes to bunker-buster bombs, the application of overwhelming force alienated a population, and this continued later in the surge period at an even higher level. And as we know now, the Taliban only thrived on these grievances in the sense of alienation that this generated. But 2009, when President Obama announced the course correction, the contours of the unwinnable war were already in place, and little was done qualitatively differently to change the status quo ante. Despite the stated goal of the surge, the hugely unhelpful timelines, the U.S. actually never transitioned the ownership or execution of the war to Afghans. In the actual conduct of the war, Afghans remained onlookers or secondary players at best, from the shadowy militias run by the U.S. government to the various specialized units or even the ANA. Afghan role in the war basically boiled down to an accessory or a hired gun. I'll come to the governance issue. Unlike the military effort, which was never transitioned, certain governance functions were transitioned almost too quickly to underprepared Afghan hands and, as a result, failed. The organization of national elections, for example, was a task which might have benefited from continued international stewardship, preferably to the United Nations. Despite our consultative culture and some limited experience in electoral democracy from the 1960s, elections in the entire democratization gambit were a novelty for Afghanistan of 2001. Our elections, therefore, became progressively worse, culminating in the fiasco that we saw in 2019. In many areas where Afghans should have been given more space to exercise greater control, Afghan ownership remained more than a mantra or an unfulfilled promise. In the aid sector, for instance, foreigners exercised stringent control; in the military contracting world, remained entirely outside the purview of the Afghan government. This left the Afghan government looking irrelevant and reinforcing a growing environment of acceptance for widespread corruption. The surge, especially in its political and economic fronts, further deepened the delta between the U.S. and the Afghan government, as the latter came to be seen increasingly as a liability rather than a partner. The perennial gap of mutual expectations between the U.S. and Afghans led to a fundamental fragmentation at the heart of the partnership. There were always two spheres of activity. The foreigners had their own summits, their own strategic discussions, made their own decisions, and the resources for their own mission. Afghans, on the other hand, occupied the domestic political sphere. And under an overarching rubric of inclusion and democracy, this gradually succumbed to pressures of corruption, nepotism, and kleptocracy. Where there were clashes between the two spheres, like it happened in the case of local governance issues and the role of provincial governments, invariably, the Afghan government ended up losing and feeling weak in the face of well-resourced parallel structures that were, such as the PRTs that were adopted by the international actors. There were even deeper levels of fragmentation on the U.S. government side, and I'm not going to go into details about the various government entities that were pursuing conflicting agendas. Coordination between them was poor, and particularly, their messages to Afghan counterparts were inconsistent. One leader might have been treated as a partner by the military, a suspect by the intelligence, or a liability, and a liability by the diplomats. This inconsistently not only confused Afghan leaders but also led to conflicting policies and efforts. The final point observation is on the regional front in Pakistan. The Afghan war was primarily a product of its regional context, and the U.S. knew this all along. However, the U.S. war-led effort produced, never produced a coherent strategy on this front. For too long, the U.S. either underestimated or willfully ignored Pakistan's role in feeding war and instability in Afghanistan. And when I say this, I speak from experience and remember all the intensity of discussions on the air, trying to convince our American partners about the role that Pakistan was playing. Everyone knew that the war could not be won as long as Pakistani sanctuaries remained untouched, yet the focus remained rigidly on the Afghan soil. This failure was perhaps the most consequential mistake of the entire war. The broader region, on the other hand, despite its complexities, initially presented the U.S. with an opportunity. This could have been taken and should have been taken to define a new beginning, including the regional powers, Russia, China, and Iran, whose zero-sum relations with the U.S. went far beyond Afghanistan. A fresh opportunity arose under President Obama, as regional countries realized that the U.S. presence was time-bound. This realization could have been nurtured into a consensus for the future of Afghanistan through diplomacy, the future of Afghanistan without the U.S. presence through diplomatic effort. As a diplomat myself at the time, I saw such consensus as not only possible but also vital for the future of Afghanistan. Instead, the U.S. continued to pursue largely bilateral dealings without coherent regional strategy, often exacerbating tensions rather than mediating them. Honorable members, in focusing on the Afghan, on the U.S. in my remarks, I am by no means seeking to diminish the agency of the Afghans. There's a terribly heavy burden of responsibility that we bear for squandering a historic opportunity for our country, and I personally feel that. Afghans, I must say, remain hopeful, despite everything, for a better future. Many still believe that the values the United States is known to uphold and represent are important to today's world. It would be a mistake for the U.S. to take past lessons as a recipe for recoiling from action and engagement. Instead, lessons are there to ensure that future interventions are wiser and better informed by understanding and humility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Ludeen. I'd like to recognize Ambassador Ikenberri for his testimony. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Co-Chairs Choudhary and Jackson and distinguished Commissioners, thank you very much for extending the invitation to testify today. I'm honored to contribute to your Afghanistan War Commission's mission to review key decisions related to our nation's involvement in Afghanistan for over the first two decades of this century, and I'll attempt to get a gold star in my opening remarks there. It's also to see a number of colleagues and friends among the Commissioners here and indeed sitting next to me, including Ambassador Ludeen remotely, and as well with the subsequent panel later this morning. All of this somehow is making me feel 15 years younger. I'll note upfront that trying to accurately recall the moment of our own past decisions and actions is often fraught. We forget or we only remember fragments. We unwillingly create new narratives with the benefit of hindsight, and we often try to rationalize and justify disappointing results. I'll do my best to present with integrity, but the challenges are quite real, as you all know. On December 1, 2009, President Barack Obama ordered the temporary surge of 33,000 U.S. troops to target the growing Taliban insurgency and secure key Afghan population centers. He explained at the time, "These are the resources that we need to seize the initiative while building the Afghan capacity that can allow for the responsible transition of our forces out of Afghanistan." Now, at that point, I'd been the U.S. ambassador to Afghanistan for about seven months. Part of my service as ambassador, while in military uniform, I'd been the U.S. Security Coordinator and head of the Office of Military Cooperation, Afghanistan from 2002 to '03, the commander of U.S.-led coalition forces in Afghanistan from 2005 to '07, and then from 2007 to 2009, the deputy chairman of the NATO Military Committee in Brussels, Belgium, with part of my portfolio, including policies related to the NATO I-S-H-A-F mission. I mention this to make the point that by December 2009, I had been directly involved in the Afghanistan war during very different phases, and in each instant, carrying out very different and ever-evolving missions. While time on the ground does not necessarily beget wisdom, I can at least say I had many experiences. And to the extent the expression that "where you sit is where you stand," I have sat in many chairs and gained over time different perspectives that I've tried to synthesize moving forward. You've received my written statement, which addresses five topics that I believe are relevant to the mission of the Afghanistan War Commission and hopefully to our discussion this morning. And these are: one, the policy reviews, policy and strategy reviews culminating in President Obama's December 2009 decision to order the temporary surge of U.S. forces and civilians to Afghanistan; two, the execution of the decided strategy; number three, the unity of United States government effort; four, the alignment of U.S., Pakistan, and Afghan interests; and number five, defining and defending the national interest. Since you have this written statement, I won't use your valuable time to elaborate. So let me finish my remarks by emphasizing that agency matters, whether in policymaking, the development of and implementation of strategy, leading departments and agencies, or commanding military formations. But agency alone does not determine outcomes. For a democracy, waging a limited war in a distant land, organizational interest and influence, processes, competing domestic and international interests, historical memories, politics, and popular support, all two matter greatly. And I am impressed in that regard by this commission's very comprehensive approach, which takes all of these factors and more into consideration. In the end, as you know, the reasons for our failure in Afghanistan are complex, and I expect our time together this morning will make this even more clear. However, we owe it to the many Americans, Afghans, and citizens around the world who sacrificed so much over a 20-year period to understand what went wrong and why. And we owe it to future generations of Americans to do the best we can to identify the mistakes made as well as what worked well, so that they are better prepared to choose and act wisely. Again, I'm honored to contribute to the-- Again, I'm honored to contribute to the Afghan War Commission's important mission, and I look forward to elaborating on any parts of my written testimony or other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to recognize Lieutenant General Michael Nagata for his testimony. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, and good morning. I want to thank you for allowing me to offer a small contribution to your efforts to illuminate and hopefully learn from America's 20 years of effort and sacrifice in South Asia. As a career Special Operations Officer, you won't be surprised that my command at the time of 9/11 was one of the first to deploy to Afghanistan, but for my remarks today, I will focus on a later period, which was the three years I spent from 2009 to 2012 as the Deputy Chief of the Office of the Defense Representative in Pakistan, based at the US Embassy. My focus there was on strengthening an existing but quite small US Special Operations effort to assist the Pakistan military to become more effective in their operations against both Taliban and Al Qaeda-related elements on their side of the Durand Line. Before continuing, I want to emphasize that I and my colleagues there passionately believed that achieving strategic success in Afghanistan required a much stronger relationship with the Army of Pakistan. At about the same time I deployed there, their army had embarked on the largest internal military campaign in their history, rivaling the size and scope of Pakistan's wars with India. The proliferation of tribal insurgence attacks in their northwestern area, many of which had ties to Al Qaeda, had become such a security threat that Pakistan was engaged in a major combat campaign against them principally in the Swat Valley region. Because of this fight, a very small US Special Operations presence that had been established in Pakistan right after 9/11 found new opportunities to develop stronger connections with the Pakistan Army, including its Special Services Group, their version of Special Operations, various types of Pakistan's constabulary forces, such as their Frontier Corps, and even with the Pakistan Air Force that was increasingly having to support their army's ground combat. And as we provided, as we proved our ability to assist these elements, we were increasingly being allowed to live with and travel with and assist Pakistani forces directly in these tribal areas, and in many ways that were previously unthinkable. By the end of my first year there, our soft advisory footprint in the country had grown substantially, and our counterparts were asking for even more. Then in 2011, the emergence of a massive flood that began in northwestern Pakistan and then flooded 20% of the country had the unplanned benefit of enabling a major increase in our collaboration with the Pakistan military. Both US and Afghan governments deployed helicopters to conduct and support flood relief operations. Overall, US helicopter crews alone rescued more than 40,000 Pakistani citizens from the flood plain. As a result, we soon had about 400 Special Operations personnel working with the Pakistan military in the border regions, all of which was a fruit of the gratitude we were enjoying from America's flood relief efforts. Accordingly, I alerted the SOCOM commander at the time, Admiral Eric Olson, that it was foreseeable that the combat success the Pakistanis were now enjoying, combined with this surge of national gratitude from the flood, could result in a larger soft footprint of at least double its current size. However, this never came to pass. Regrettably, I will conclude my remarks by describing, admittedly in retrospect, what I have come to view as the meteor strikes that tragically led to all of these various elements of progress I have described come to an end. The first was contained in the US announcement of the Afghan surge in 2009 that there was an 18-month time limit after which US forces would begin returning home. Whatever the merits of this announcement were, it injected an element of doubt among the Pakistani military leadership about US seriousness that we could never completely shake. The second was the WikiLeaks scandal in 2010, which damaged many of our important military intelligence cooperation efforts with the Pakistani government because the leaks contained so much scathing criticism of our Pakistani counterparts. The third was the public controversy around the so-called Raymond Davis affair in 2011, where a US contractor was jailed after he killed two Pakistani citizens attempting to rob him. The political turmoil and popular outrage this engendered put even more drag on our efforts to keep improving our relationship with Pakistan's military. Yet despite these efforts, it really was the fourth event that sealed the fate of our campaign, the Abbottabad raid that killed Osama bin Laden. Ironically, for a few days after that operation, I and my embassy colleagues were being constantly congratulated by our Pakistani counterparts, both million, both military and civilian, for this success. However, as it became clear to the Pakistanis that much of the US public commentary about the raid were statements such as, quote, "If the Pakistanis knew he was in Abbottabad, they are evil, and if they didn't know he was there, they are incompetent," unquote. The damage such statements did is incalculable. It doesn't require much imagination to understand how debilitating the accumulation of these meteor strikes actually were. While we struggled mightily to continue what had genuinely become a growing strategic partnership there, our counterparts soon began asking us to reduce our presence. By the time I went home in the summer of 2012, we had ended our grand experiment to achieve all that I have tried to describe, and there was no longer a US Special Operations presence or an effective military relationship with the Pakistan Army. And as they say, the rest is history. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now begin the question-and-answer portion of this panel, and I will yield myself as co-chair five minutes. I'd like to start with a question for Ambassador Lud. Doug, you served both President Bush and President Obama on the Afghanistan and Pakistan accounts for many years, and the value of your insight and feedback is immense for this commission, given your role as a strategist and an overseer of the policy implementation. So we're very grateful that you are agreeing to serve as witness in today's hearing. I was hoping to take a step back, actually, from the specific surge debates timeline to start with, given the arc of your experience. We started our first hearing, first and second hearing, with a conversation about how the Taliban were defeated rather quickly and unexpectedly. But by the end of the Bush administration, the second term, the Taliban had returned, and they were quite powerful, and that security dynamic led to the conversations about the need for a surge. And so I was hoping you, as someone who was in the room many, many times, was able to advise presidents, like as the Bush years came to a close, what did you believe was required to address the return of the Taliban?
So thanks for that question. You're right that this didn't begin in 2009 with the inauguration of President Obama. In fact, I would say by 2006, it was pretty clear that the Taliban were resurgent, and we measured this by way of control or contestation of district centers, so geographic control, but also metrics like volume of attacks and the rise of suicide bombing, roadside bombs, and so forth. So there was quite a bit of data that suggested the Taliban were in effect back. By 2008, President Bush commissioned an interagency review, which was designed to set him up for any sort of end-of-administration decisions. We conducted that review, presented the results, and about the time that President Obama was actually elected in November of 2008, there was a conversation between the Bush administration and the Obama transition team that had the product of our review, the Bush review, passed to the Obama team, in the transition team, as an input to their assuming office in January 2009. So that review essentially passed over the back fence to the Obama team. It then served, the Bush review, served as one of the inputs to the Riedel process, the Riedel Report, which was commissioned in the first week of the Obama administration, and then eventually culminated in a speech to the nation in March of 2009. So that's sort of the transition picture.
And what was your advice kind of at the time when you were thinking, in the review in particular, can you speak to what you thought was necessary to get at the rise of the Taliban?
Right, so I don't, I think there were 10 conclusions in the Bush review. I don't remember all of them, but they had very much to do with increasing the effort in Afghanistan, both on the military side but also on the governance side and on the development side. So essentially, all the input measures we thought needed to be upgraded. It talked very much about the relationship between Afghanistan and Pakistan, and how you had to address these as a pair, because the insurgency actually straddled that border. So you couldn't focus, you couldn't fixate on Afghanistan alone. And we began to talk at that point about the notion of counterinsurgency as a technique, as a method.
And then finally, just to wrap up this question, can you give us a sense of the internal debates around kind of the rise of the Taliban going into the Obama administration? Again, was there disagreement or alignment within the US interagency on how to approach the problem? For example, was there consensus that the safe havens were one of the key factors in contributing to the rise of the Taliban and that we needed to focus more on Pakistan, for example?
Well, in that specific case, yes. I mean, there's very few historic cases where an insurgency is defeated if there's an external safe haven, and that was well-known, represented both in the Bush review, which was passed as a transition document, but also in the Riedel Report, and then subsequently, and I'm sure we'll field questions subsequently, in the fall 2009 review as well. So this linkage of Afghanistan and Pakistan was clear.
And so would you agree with the statement that it was well-recognized in the, say, second term of the Bush administration that Pakistan was indeed the source of a lot of the problems that the US was facing in Afghanistan and needed to be focused on?
Well, I wouldn't say that Pakistan was the source of the Afghan insurgency. I think the source of the Afghan insurgency was Afghanistan. But there's no question that Taliban leaders resided in relative safe haven in Pakistan outside of our, the range of our military means.
Okay, thank you. And a really quick question to Lieutenant General Nagata, to continue this conversation about the safe haven. Fast-forwarding to when the bin Laden raid happened, which is out of our scope today, but it's, the raid is an example of the US taking a unilateral action to pursue a counterterrorism objective. Prior to that, there had been significant discussion of the safe haven, as Doug was mentioning, being a source of tension for US troops, and the Quaid Ashura, the Taliban leadership, were comfortably in that safe haven. Was it ever on the table that the US should go after the Quaid Ashura in a unilateral way? Why or why not? Was this discussed pre-bin Laden raid? And I'm asking specifically because of the two-war dynamic, that we were fighting one war on counterterrorism and another one on the security of Afghanistan. You speak to that, please.
Thank you. There certainly were discussions, and to a degree, there were efforts to unilaterally go after some of the leadership, whether that they were Taliban or Al Qaeda on the Pakistan side of the border. My memory is that the bulk of them were never executed because of the general concern of what the backlash might be if we conducted military operations inside the country. There were, as this commission knows very well, there were other activities we were doing to achieve something along those lines, but I can't discuss that here. But although you didn't ask me this, I think it's worth giving you my conclusion. It was never entertained or implemented at the level or with the frequency that would actually be necessary to strategically disable the safe haven. It's not that we did nothing, it just never amounted to enough.
Thank you. Co-Chair Jackson, you're recognized for your question.
Yeah, this question again for Ambassador Lud. Did the administration, the Obama administration's 2009 timetable for withdrawal announced in the West Point speech adequately and fairly reflect the Department of Defense's recommendations for a timetable to evaluate progress in the surge? Was anything lost in translation in this discussion between Defense and the NSC? And what, in your opinion, accounts for the surprise expressed by some DOD civilian and military leaders about the 18-month timeline?
So my recollection is that in the course of the fall 2009 review, in one of the sessions chaired by the president, he posed the question, "How will we know if this is successful?" Meaning the surge, right, the topic of discussion. And one of the principals from the Department of Defense opined that he would know in 18 to 24 months whether the proposal to conduct a counterinsurgency campaign on the four-step process, clear, hold, build, transfer to the Afghans, right? Whether that four-step process were successful in 18 to 24 months. So when, at the conclusion of the review, when the National Security Council staff compiled the findings in the form of a decision memorandum for the president, we noted the 18 to 24-month timeline offered by the Secretary of Defense, and applied 24 months from the point at which the counterinsurgency model was first applied, which was the summer of 2009, by Marine battalions that had been dispatched into Helmand Province. So this is the famous Nawaw campaign and so forth, right? So we simply took the summer of 2009, applied 24 months, and arrived at the summer of 2011. Now, because that appeared in the decision memorandum for the president, he discussed it as he made his decision, he discussed it and mentioned it in both the Oval Office session upon his decision, and then subsequently, I think by way of video to the leaders in the field. And I accept that to this day that some of them were surprised by that. But frankly, it should have been in our notes from the review.
Thank you. I mean, it raises an interesting question, particularly for you with an extensive military background, whether this 18 to 24-month period included what would inevitably be the logistical lags between a decision and the actual arrival of forces in all areas. I remember vividly this, these discussions about the South versus now we're going to transition to the East. What did you make of the Washington policy process, which is about decision and this problem of lags?
Well, I think that when the secretary mentioned 18 to 24 months, he was aware of the fact that, you know, the decision doesn't immediately lead to troops on the ground and effects on the battlefield and so forth, right? And it was, it was a bit of an estimate. It wasn't, it wasn't hard math that we would see something instantly at the 19th month, for example. So he appreciated that there would be lags. I remember part of the conversation as being, "Look, at the end of 18 to 24 months, if we're successful, so in cleared, hold, build, and we'd actually transferred, reached the last step, transferred security, think in a district center, right, as a unit of measure, if we had transferred security responsibility to the Afghans at that point, then we could move on. We could either move to the East, or we could begin to bring US troops back. If we were unsuccessful in 18 to 24 months, then it would cast doubt on the model of clear, hold, build, transfer in the conditions we faced in Afghanistan. It doesn't discard the model altogether, it would be more of a reflection, I think, on the difficulty of applying it under those conditions on the ground."
To ask a slightly different question, and this picks up on Mr. Sadne's testimony, if, if sort of a year into the surge strategy, there were serious concerns about whether we were changing Pakistani strategic calculus, how did you we were changing Pakistani strategic calculus, how did you think about this question of whether to revise the aims of U.S. policy or to change the ways we were approaching the Pakistanis to address the central problem of sanctuary?
Well, I think in the year from sort of January to December of 2009, so as, I'm sorry, 10, so as the surge is taking hold, right? Mike Nagata has outlined the dynamics inside Pakistan. I think that that year, among other things, demonstrated the difficulty and the sort of high ambition of trying to change the strategic calculus of Pakistan. And there's a lot of reasons for this, right? First of all, we were dependent on Pakistan for our supply lines. Second of all, as a nuclear weapons state. Third, we assessed that the stability of Pakistan as a state, which was very fractious, right? So you had not only the Punjabis, but you had the sins, the Baluch, the Pashtuns, all buying for authority and adding an element of instability to Pakistani politics. And I remember most of all, this concern by Pakistani military leadership at the time, that their greatest concern was that actions taken in Afghanistan by us, or potentially by us across the border into Pakistan, could unite the Afghan Taliban with the Pakistani Taliban. And that this combined Pashtun threat could actually threaten the Pakistani state. So Pakistan, I think, by the end of 2010 and the one-year review, was viewed as much more fragile than it was when the review initially took place in the fall of '09.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ashley, you are recognized.
So first, I'll be saying thanks to all the witnesses. This is, it's like the Yankees back in the '30s. It's kind of murder's row of heavy hitters. I hope you take all that with, as a compliment. I'm not going to go there. I'm not even going to comment on graying of hair and the fact that Mike Nagata and I have known each other since we were captains. And so showing our age a little bit these days. My question is for General Nagata, so, and you've kind of all framed this, two parts. One is, I think an easier question is, talk about why Pakistan mattered in defeating Al Qaeda. But the second part is, as you look back on this, the idea of sanctuary and, and we just talked about the complexity of that, the nuclear issue, the militancy, the fractious and stability issues of just the government itself, all played into this. And so as we, as you look at this, in 2025, the idea of a sanctuary, were we too risk averse or was this a state of nature in the Pakistani relationship that we simply were going to have to accept something that historically we knew was going to be tantamount to failure, which is that the sanctuary was going to exist? Or were we just too risk averse and we missed opportunity just to press that relationship, knowing those other outcomes that Ambassador Lute just talked about were potentially more dangerous than allowing the sanctuary to exist? That's a, I know it's a pretty complicated issue, Mike, but that one's yours.
Thank you. It's great to see you, Bob. Well, at the risk of stating the obvious, I think Pakistan mattered for many reasons. But for the purposes of your examination, the fact that Pakistan was such a beneficial sanctuary for both Taliban and Al Qaeda elements, there are other reasons why it mattered, but that has to be, in my view, that has to be the most important reason. That sanctuary injected enormous risks into our campaign in Afghanistan. And what most Americans don't understand is how much risk it was injecting in the stability of a nuclear country like Pakistan. As I indicated in my prepared remarks, the Pakistanis were taking enormous casualties in their fight in the frontier areas of Pakistan. It didn't get a lot of attention, didn't make a lot of American news, but their casualties were pretty staggering when I first got there. And they got worse. On the question of, were we too risk averse? My answer has to be yes, but of course, I am biased because my mission was to help my special operations colleagues and my colleagues in the U.S. Embassy find ways to make the Pakistanis more successful. And every bit of that required taking risks. There were relational risks, there were political risks, there were military risks, there were stability of the country risks that we had to deal with. But I think I and my Embassy colleagues all came to this with the, with the attitude that there is no reward without risk. We have to take risks here. But there were, in my judgment, there were too many times, there were too many instances where we knew, at least I and my Embassy colleagues believed we knew, that there were opportunities to help the Pakistanis in ways that would make people in this town very nervous, but we thought was worth the risk. And most of the time, the answer was no, that's too risky. Now, you know, I have no crystal ball. I can't turn back the hands of time and say, if we had taken all those risks, it would all magically have been successful. I don't know that. But if we weren't willing to take risks there, it begs the question, were we actually serious about dealing with the sanctuary?
No, thanks, Mike. I yield back.
Commissioner Bash, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sedney, thank you so much for being here, and it was a great pleasure to serve alongside you in the Department of Defense. I wanted to ask you, how did decisions made during the Bush administration shape President Obama's available and viable options to advance, to advance our counterterrorism and counterinsurgency goals in Afghanistan? When President Obama was looking at his options, was a military surge the only realistic option at the time, given the circumstances? What were we looking at at that time?
What President Obama faced when he took office was not just a deteriorating situation in Afghanistan, but a crisis. By the summer of 2008, the Taliban were at the gates of Kabul. Many people believed that the Taliban would be able to take major cities in Afghanistan in the next fighting season in 2009. So the decisions and actions of the Bush administration from 2001 till 2009, and particularly, I would stress, decisions taken in the early years of the Bush administration, 2001, 2003, laid the groundwork for that failure that we were experiencing in 2009. I think we've, all of us here in this room have heard the statement that Ambassador Mullin made, Admiral Mullin made about, in Afghanistan, we just do what we can. Afghanistan took a second seat to Iraq for eight years. When I first arrived in Afghanistan in 2002, we were already taking a second seat. Key special operators and other personnel were being moved out of Afghanistan in the spring of 2002 to Iraq. That priority continued. So President Obama was left with a big, huge mess, if I can use a scientific term, Doug. And he had already committed in the campaign that he was going to fix that. So the situation he faced was dire and needed the kind of attention that he gave it.
This is a question for any of the members of the panel. Some of you have referenced that limiting the timeframe to 18 months or so, basically telegraph to adversaries that we're out of there and that we're not going to be sticking around. But is it realistic to basically say we're going to have an open-ended commitment to Afghanistan? Doesn't that in some ways encourage dependence? General Ikrambary, Ambassador Ikrambary?
Yeah, so the, excuse me. The President, when he made the announcement at West Point several days before, General McChrystal and I had a video teleconference with him from Kabul. And he explained that part of that announcement was going to be, include the 18-month time limit on the surge because the surge had already been in effect for six months. And both of us were surprised with that, but he very clearly asked us whether we could live with that, so to speak, and support it. We both did. I still support that decision. I think in President Obama's mind, there were several reasons for him to announce the time limit. One was his, to your point, a concern and informed by previous limited wars that commanders and civilian heads on the ground will just keep on asking for more. You know, if we have more time, more resources, the strategy that we're pursuing will work. The second, I think, was to send a signal to the Afghan government and military about the need to take charge. And the third might have been to signal our own interagency, after 15 years of, or 10-plus years of wars in the Middle East and Central Asia, that anticipating big power competition was returning. And so the need to start to shift focus there as well. But the fact that it was a surprise to our allies and especially to our Afghan partners without deep consultation did lead them to conclude that this was the first announcement of abandonment. I would disagree with that, though. Really, I think the Afghan conclusion was perhaps by 2005, when things were going wrong in Afghanistan and we were unable to do much about it because of the war in Iraq. Already, that thinking was there. The second was, at a personal level, I'll share a story from when I was teaching at Stanford University a few years ago, and I had a seminar on war in Afghanistan and had people like Doug Lute and Jim Mattis participate. One of my students was a former Army lieutenant, fought in eastern Afghanistan during the surge years, and he talked to me after class and got very emotional and said, Ambassador, do you know how hard it is to look troops in the eye and tell them to go off and do dangerous things when it's already been announced that six months from now, this is the culmination of our effort?
Thank you all for your testimony, for your decades of service, and thank you to the Afghanistan War Commission staff.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment before we go to the next question. I know Ambassador Lute, you wanted to follow up on something. Go ahead.
So, sorry, just briefly. So this question of Pakistan again, because this is really central. If, in fact, the Taliban had a safe haven next door to Afghanistan, as an insurgency, what we know, is it going to be very hard to beat this, right? Could almost prove to be decisive, right? So why didn't we do more against the Taliban? First of all, the fragility, the Afghan state. Mike Nagata mentioned the TTP, the Pakistani Taliban occupying SWAT, which is from here to Baltimore, from the capital of Islamabad, right? So this is, this is next door to the capital city. So, and that was, I think, a major factor in the, in the 2010 experience. And then the other thing is, as Mike also outlined, we were relying on Pakistan's cooperation to go after our key objective, which was Al Qaeda. And they didn't always cooperate, but they gave us space to go after Al Qaeda on their territory. And so for both of those reasons, it was, it made sense strategically not to, not to threaten the stability of the Pakistani state.
Okay, thank you. I can see everyone getting very excited now, wanting to raise their hand. So what I'm going to do is, I will ask Ambassador Ikrambary and Mr. Sedney to, I will call on you after the next question. So we can get to the next question. But I also want to go to Ambassador Ludin, if you can hear me. I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to this, the view that the surge deadline was, President Obama thought the surge deadline would signal to the Afghans that it's time for them to kind of take the, take a leadership role and take charge. Could you explain to us what the conversations were on the Afghan side about the surge? And did it in fact compel Afghans to take the lead?
The way I saw this at the time, and still, I guess, is the analysis, is that when you have an enemy that has the biggest strategic asset that they have is time, and you didn't announce a timeline, then you basically hand them huge leverage. So it was, it was not clearly a wise decision, the way we saw it. And I, and I think from the other angle that we saw it at the time there was, was the region because the, at that part of the world and beyond Pakistan, not just Pakistan, but the entire region that surrounded Afghanistan was deeply invested, were watchful, and it was a strategic message for them when the deadline, the timeline was announced about the fact that the U.S. presence was time-bound. And in the absence of, of then a strategy to then translate that timeline into a particular plan of action and to deliver something, like for example, as I said in my opening statement, you might have been able to then say to the region, okay, well, now you see there is no long-term strategy, destabilizing strategy for the reason, so, because we're going to be leaving, so let's just see what you can all agree on in terms of future of Afghanistan. But that didn't happen as well. So in the absence of translating a timeline into something that's positive and conservative, then, then that was hugely undermining, another undermining factor. Coming to the point about the, getting the Afghan government to take responsibility, clearly, I mean, the way we saw it there was that these were two very, very, I'm surprised a lot of times when I, even now, I see how different the two spheres were, the two sides. This was never, the whole idea of timeline, the whole plan for surge was never communicated to the Afghans. It was let alone consulted. We were at the receiving end, and by that time, by 2009, and then following on from there, and you remember, we had a hugely divisive election in 2009 itself. And President Karzai came out of that election really deeply affected by what he felt was a betrayal, because he saw that, that some in the U.S. government were trying to undermine him and worked actively against his reelection bid. So there was an element of personal frustration for him. So the relationship was already on, on helpful footing. But then to just then, you know, assume that there was this sort of intimate conversation happening to say, okay, well, we have a timeline now and then you take responsibility, that actually did not happen at all.
Okay. Thank you, Ambassador Ludin. Okay. I will now turn to recognize Commissioner Crocker for his question. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you, and thanks to this panel, not only for your testimony today, but for your cumulative decades of service to the United States in their very difficult and dangerous circumstances. Ambassador Lute, I want to come back to the timing of the surge and the announcement of the withdrawal. It's a tale of two surges, and you're a veteran of both, as am I, the Iraq surge and the Afghan surge. In the case of Iraq, from the President on down, those of us involved adamantly refused to indicate when the surge might conclude. We were pressed very hard on that on the Hill by journalists in other media, but we refused to ever set an end date for the surge because we thought that would simply tell the enemy how long they had to hold out. Was there any debate along those lines in the discussion of the Afghan surge, that maybe it wasn't a good idea to have an end date, citing the Iraq example?
So I don't remember that dimension of the comparison between the Iraq surge and the Afghan surge. I do remember in the course of the fall 2009 review, General Petraeus fielded a question of, well, how long did the Iraq surge last, right? And his reply was, well, it peaked in July of '07, and by Christmas of '07, we were able to withdraw, I think, the lead brigade. So roughly six months from culmination to beginning to withdraw. You know, that was more of a sidebar conversation in the sit room than it was decisive. You know, that was more of a sidebar conversation in the sit room than it was decisive in any way, because the two conditions are just so dramatically different. So in short, I don't remember, after the conversation that I've already related with the 18- to 24-month estimate, I don't remember further discussion on that. I would note, though, that in December of 2009, in President Karzai's inauguration speech, so he'd been re-elected, he takes office, he states in his inauguration speech that it is his ambition that by the end of his term, so this would now be December of 2014, that Afghan security forces would be in the lead across Afghanistan, right? So we, at least for those of us in the White House, were seeing that as a major milestone. Here's the president of the country, our partner, saying he wants to be in the lead. How do we get there on an accelerated basis? And, and in that light, the summer of 2011, beginning to recover the surge, seemed more like a milestone towards Karzai's objective than it did a US-only decision.
And looking at the region, Ambassador Ludin spoke to the impact in Afghanistan on the announcement of an end date of the surge, and his assessment of the impact on regional parties. General Nagata spoke to the announcement of a termination date as having a major negative impact on Pakistan. Was there any discussion at the time of a possible contradiction between changing Pakistan's strategic logic and announcing an end date for the surge?
So I recall that as a discussion topic. Might have happened on the sidebar, but I don't recall that as part of the strategic review.
Thank you. And Ambassador Ludin, it's very good to see you again, even via remote. Many of us in this room have years of service dedicated to Afghanistan. You have a lifetime. In his opening testimony, Ambassador Lute spoke to the denial of the United States of an opportunity for itself to engage the Taliban at the time of the surge, when we would have been in a position of our greatest strength. Could you speak to Afghan considerations of engagement of the Taliban during this period, the period of the surge, particularly 2009, 2010? What were the attitudes in Kabul in terms of Afghan government engagement with the Taliban? Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Crocker. Really good to see you as well, and thank you for all your service. The subject of, of the peace process, as we used to call it, and the sort of, and imperative to find a political solution to this, to the war that we were at, was one strategic convergence that sort of seemed to come about between the Obama administration and the Karzai's second elected term in, in office. Karzai, you will recall and agree, from much earlier on, in fact, from even early days of 2002, when I started working with him in 2003, you know, he was making these informal forays and approaches, you know, in his own way, and always felt that they would be, that would be helpful to have a political discussion with the Taliban. But, but then later on, when, when officially the United States' policy changed to one of encouraging negotiations and a negotiated settlement, there was that, regrettably, and you will recall that we were, in fact, at the time, very much involved in, in then what was seen as the only sort of credible way in which Pakistan could be, Taliban could be delivered to negotiated table, and that was through Pakistan. There was an attempt made to create this office in Qatar to see if the Taliban, you know, there may be some element in Taliban that may be able to operate outside Pakistan's control, and therefore that would provide a channel for that. So in that effort, I, sadly, this convergence at the strategic level did not really translate into, into, again, into concerted effort, but both Afghans in the United States and on the international side, everybody else. I, you know, there was deep suspicion, certainly I can speak on the Afghan side, that there were, a lot of Afghans did, were not very trusting of the, of some of the initiatives, like the opening of the Qatar office in Doha, for example, or, or even the way that Pakistan was actually maintaining two separate relationships, with the Afghans, they were saying one thing, to the Americans, they were saying other things. And even though we did, came up with initiatives like a trilateral commission, you probably know, where the three countries coming together, still, Pakistan found a way to avoid acting in concert. So I would say, just to answer you the question, is that it was, the political solution was one area, one strategy, where both sides agreed very much, wholeheartedly, and Karzai absolutely, really believed in this personally. But that sadly, because of, you know, other things that were maybe subject for another conversation sometime, this did not sadly translate into, into a practical strategy.
Thank you, Ambassador Ludin. I will give one minute for a follow-up to Ambassador Ikenberry, and then Mr. Sedney. Please go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Co-Chair. To come back to Jeremy, what, your question, on this question of the, the time limit, unquestionably, in my view, as we've heard here today, had, that at a minimum, should have been discussed at length with our partners, first and foremost with the, with the Afghans, and with the Pakistanis as well. And perhaps we could have turned that to an advantage, saying that, here's the timeline we've got, you know, can you work with this, because our goal is to help you take charge on the military front, on the political front. Having said that, though, we've got to remember that what we're talking about is fighting a limited war in a very, very distant country, where we have to ask, continually remind ourselves, ask the question, what is the compelling national interest? So as we look then at the time-limited surge, the military, in fighting a counterinsurgency campaign, will of course ask the question then to the commander-in-chief, how far can we continue with this? And they'll say, Mr. President, Commander-in-Chief, we have to have conditions-based approach. I can tell you when we get the political-military conditions on the ground in order for the surge to end. Now, a president, though, in the United States, he's got a world that goes beyond Afghanistan and Pakistan. He's got financial crises, he's got potential pandemics, he's got China, he's got Russia, and conditions are changing all of the time. So it's also fair for a president and a commander-in-chief to say, I too have a condition, the American people have a condition, and that's called time.
Thank you. Mr. Sedney, please, you have one minute.
Thank you. On the same, thank you, on the same topic, I can tell you, it was a complete surprise to people at my level, including my colleagues at the Joint Staff and my colleagues at the State Department, when President Obama announced at his West Point speech that there would be a surge and a withdrawal. Well, people, Ambassador Lute and his team knew about it, and General McChrystal and Ambassador Ikenberry knew about it, Secretary Gates knew about it, but people below didn't. And if you read Secretary Gates's book, you talk to Secretary Gates, he phrases this decision in very much in the terms of a bargain. The President Obama wanted a time limit, and he, the choice he gave, Secretary Gates, and he reports that, was a choice between a surge of 30,000 and a time limit, or something much less. So it wasn't, it was a, it was a bargaining, and it was a bludgeoning, really, and so people were forced to take something that they didn't believe in. More broadly, those who could make a, have given better information about the consequences to our neighbors, to the Afghans, to the Pakistanis of such a deadline, never had the opportunity to make that case to their principals. Therefore, the principals made a decision in the absence of really good information.
Commissioner Allen, you are recognized for your question.
Thanks so much. Mr. Sedney, good to see you. What, I want to go back to Pakistan, which was just being discussed a minute ago. What influence realistically did the United States have in aligning our objectives with Pakistan? And if we had any leverage, did we use it well?
The question of whether we had any leverage that would have worked to achieve our goal of changing Pakistan's strategic calculus is, I think, still an open one today. What I can say is the leverage that we were able to use didn't work, and that was fairly considerable. Ambassador Lute and his team, and along with Ambassador Holbrook, devised a strategic engagement with the top levels of the Pakistani government, bringing them to Washington and working in many ways. We passed the Nundlugar bill, which gave additional assistance to Pakistan. We did a lot of things to try and affect that strategic calculus. But I would have to stress that in our discussions about Pakistan, it was always overwhelmingly clear, it was stated by the National Security Advisor, that Pakistan was more important to the United States than Afghanistan, because of Pakistan's possession of nuclear weapons. It's important to put all this in historical perspective, in 2002, the spring of 2002, Afghanistan and India came very, very close, maybe the closest they've ever come, to a nuclear war. The US worked extensively to try and stop that, and we did play a role in preventing a nuclear war, but we were always concerned about, number one, a nuclear war between India and Pakistan, and number two, the safety and security of Pakistan's nuclear material. We were concerned about what might happen if that got into the hands of the al Qaeda. Those were more important interests. And then thirdly, Ambassador, or, sorry, General Nagata referred to it, we had certain activities, which neither General Nagata nor I are going to discuss out here, that were taking place in Pakistan that constrained our ability. So we never, were there options we could have taken? Was there leverage we could have used and didn't use? Yes, I believe so, and I'll be happy to discuss that in a classified hearing with you.
So at best, getting aligned on Afghanistan was a number four on the priority list?
It definitely wasn't number one, I would say.
Is there anything we could have used to coerce Pakistan?
I would defer that question to General Nagata, who knows Pakistan better than I do, but I don't believe that we had the capability to coerce Pakistan. Pakistan had successfully negotiated, for example, a 10-year boycott of our providing parts for F-16s, we had sold them, and end-all military assistance for a decade. The Pakistanis were very clear about their national goal, their national interest, that Pakistani military's interest in its survival as the ultimate authority in Pakistan. This is still playing out today. I don't think that we had any way to force Pakistan to do what we wanted.
General Nagata, do you want to add anything here?
Yes, sir, thank you. I concur. There, with, there was no way we could coerce Pakistan to do our bidding, for all the obvious reasons. Nuclear arms state, we were highly dependent on Pakistani cooperation, not just because of our combat operations within Afghanistan, but because the logistical trail that forces in Afghanistan depended on required Pakistani cooperation. But what we could do, and I would argue, we were increasingly demonstrating we could achieve, was to influence and incentivize choices by the Pakistani military and their government, because the government basically exceeds to whatever the military decides they want. We were demonstrating increasingly effective ways of influencing and incentivizing their behavior, and as I said in my prepared remarks, they were ecstatic with the direct and indirect military support we were giving them to quell the single largest combat campaign they had ever mounted inside their own country. And it was resulting in overtures of new, for new opportunities for military cooperation, collaboration, that were incredibly tantalizing. It's just that it didn't last.
Our, their cooperation with us didn't last, or our engagement with them on that topic didn't last?
The four meteor strikes I talked about in my prepared remarks, they brought the relationship to the end, to an end.
Yeah.
And we couldn't recover from them.
Okay, good. I think I'm out of time. You'll be back.
Thank you. Commissioner Feda, you are recognized for your question.
Great, thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you for agreeing to join the Commission today and testify before it. I found all of your written and verbal testimonies to be compelling, personal, and honest. Ambassadors, General Lute and Ikenberry, great to see you both again, and Dazde Sedney, good to see you again. I'm sorry, General Nagata, we never had the chance to work together, but during the Bush 43 second term, I had the chance to work with the three gentlemen to your right. And thank you all for what you've done for the United States, NATO, and Afghanistan. You all have committed time, and at times, personal sacrifice in order to try to make Afghanistan better, safer, and enduring. So thank you, on behalf of the Commission and myself. Your testimonies demonstrated the overall USG effort had aspirations, limitations, blind spots, and contradictions. For Dazde Sedney, and obviously you've had the opportunity to comment on parts of this with the last two interventions, to use a NATO term, but were SecDef, Gates, and DoD's views sufficiently considered and respected in the overall decision for the surge? I know you were asked certain parts of this, but there were clearly big personalities at the table during this part, and do you, in your opinion, as a senior OSD rep at the table, believe that Secretary Gates's views and everything that you worked on were sufficiently considered?
Well, first, a senior OSD rep at the table, it was always Secretary Gates.
At this table.
Yeah, but at this table, yes. And I have Secretary Gates's book here, because I think it provides a great picture of things that I didn't know about at the time, such as the decision to time-limit the surge. And so I would, I would definitely defer to him, and I think you all have spoken to him. I believe that in the discussions, in those 2009 discussions, the big, the big review, the fall 2009 review, that the views of the Department of Defense, including General McChrystal's views, expressed in his analysis that he sent into Washington at the end of August that year, were fully taken into account. I think they were listened to, I think that process was run very well, Ambassador Lute was the one who ran that process. So I think during that process, things were aired. Where things fell apart were in the decision-making process that resulted, and in the follow-up afterwards. So for example, in December of 2010, we did a review, a 12-month review, the 2009 decision called for that 12-month review. Ambassador Lute led a group, I was part of it, to Afghanistan and Pakistan, and to US-NATO, where we reviewed all of the issues, including Pakistan. We produced a report on that. There were severe differences between the Department of Defense's views and the National Security Council's view on that report. Secretary Gates details those differences in his, in his book. So at that point of time, our view was that the situation, as I said in my testimony in 2010, was different than it was in 2009, and it was not what we expected when we did the review. Therefore, things, particularly the time limit to the surge, needed to be reevaluated. General Petraeus was asked about that after he took over, and said it should be reevaluated, said the timeline should be extended. So, but again, I say President Obama was the president. He had, as Ambassador Ikenberry said, many other issues that he had to balance. He made different decisions. My concern with President Obama is he never told us that. He never said that publicly, and therefore, we had to sort of feel our way from, from it. And soldiers were sent to die for something the president didn't believe in. That was my biggest concern on that.
Dazde Sedney, let me ask you a follow-up, to the degree that you're able to comment, and maybe Ambassador Lute can do the same. Do, is there any sense that General McChrystal's recommended, recommendation for the numbers of troops as part of the, the follow-on, were limited by political realities, or was, as we used to say in the building, was it unconstrained advice? Whoever would like to answer.
I can, I'll be, take a shot at that, and then, and General Lute can, can do it as well. I believe they were constrained, that General McChrystal felt that he couldn't ask for more troops than he did. I personally raised the, my belief, that General McChrystal's recommendation for troops were, it contained his three options, that the top option was too low, that if you look at counterinsurgency theory, if you look at the experiences of Iraq, what was needed there to achieve the goals in Iraq, would lead those who look at this from a theoretical perspective, that the resources that General McChrystal asked for were significantly less than he should have. And I believe that should have been part of the review process. It never was. No one in the review process that I know of ever said, General McChrystal, do you actually need more than you asked for? need more than you asked for?"
Please go ahead, real quick. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So I think it's important to think carefully about the one-year review, right? Because there's a lot of time and energy spent on the decision, the 2009 decision, and the surge itself. But the one-year review is really important, and David raises an important point. I don't remember the whole review, but I remember some data points that are compelling here. Number one, when we went to Afghanistan, we asked how many of the 72 districts that had been approved as part of the surge, how many had made their way through the four-step process: clear, hold, build, transfer, right? Now, the 18 to 24 months weren't consumed yet, but how could we show progress? The answer at the Three Star Command at the time was, "Oh, no, no, no. You have the denominator wrong. It's not 72 districts, it's now 96." That was never approved by the White House, and it's in contravention of the presidential decision memo. So, much as some in Washington suspected, the counterinsurgency campaign had this sort of natural tendency to expand and build. So we went from 72 to 96. How are we doing on the ANSF, on the building of the Afghan Army? Well, there's a problem. There's an annual attrition rate of 30% in the Afghan National Army that we're trying to build. These are cast big suspicions on the campaign, right? And then, as already discussed, how are we doing with Pakistan? No indication that we're changing the Pakistani strategic calculus. So for those who rushed forward to the summer of '11 and asked, "Well, why did the president take the decision?", he had a mile marker in the end of '10. And it's the kind of data that the review revealed to him that I think influenced his decision.
Commissioner Hardig, you are recognized for your question.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the witnesses for your incredible service, and also for your generosity in helping us learn from your experiences and tell the full story to the American people. My question is for Ambassador Aikenberry. And looking back at the time of the surge review, you expressed some skepticism about General McChrystal's preferred approach. In your testimony, you expressed very clearly some concern about CIVM coordination, civilian resourcing, and indeed, the whole strategic review process that led to the surge. So I'd love to hear, what was your theory of success at the time? What would a better strategy have looked like in your estimation?
I don't know that I could articulate what a clear alternative strategy would have been. If we could go back, though, to the conceptualization of this surge, perhaps giving a quick critique of that can address, can answer your question. So when General McChrystal was given the task of doing his review, and then that would lead to his conclusions and recommended strategy, he was inclusive. And I say in my testimony, I did an inadequate job of inserting myself in that process. That said, I think that in the future, if we're looking for lessons learned, that kind of review should have clearly been ordered from the White House. If it's going to be done in the field, it should have been a fully integrated ambassadorial commander review. This was more of a political problem in Afghanistan. We've talked about that before. So that would be point number one. Then, as we looked at the review process as it was going on, it couldn't have been more thorough. However, were the key assumptions, the assumptions that really mattered in that review, were they discussed fully? And did we, were we explicit about them? So Ambassador Lute's mentioned one: Pakistan. How was Pakistan going to play in this? Is Karzai and his administration onside or offside? There were some big assumptions made that proved flawed. Third, with regard to the war gaming that went on. I would say, on the one hand, that the military did an absolutely superb job, let's call it operational tactical war gaming. How will we do in a particular part of Afghanistan against Taliban? How could civil-military fusion work in terms of its deployment to certain provinces? But then, to get back to the assumptions, really the big questions that should have been asked at the ambassador, the four-star level back in Washington, D.C., the big war gaming should be, what if Pakistan is offside? What if President Karzai is offside? A fourth point would be that I think that by the time General McChrystal had submitted his recommendations, now, we had had the example of Iraq, we had been fighting in Afghanistan, and the paradigm was classic counterinsurgency. And so I think there's a tendency, then, at that point in time, on the civilian and the military side, that we're seized with the counterinsurgency model, and the question becomes, how are we going to fight this doctrine going forward, as opposed to stepping back and looking for a new creative ideas? And we've already talked, then, about the consequence of the time limit.
Thank you very much. My next question is for Ambassador Lute. And, you know, two things that we haven't discussed really directly here, but have certainly come up in the context of talking about the time bound, the 18 months for the surge, is, one, domestic politics, whether that's just the ability to sustain the funding and the constant of the war. And when I was in the White House, what President Obama often talked about, about his concern about a nation at perpetual war. So the domestic politics, everyone expressed that. And the second one is the stress on the force, right? By 2005, 2006, we're already starting to see trouble with military hitting its recruiting numbers, sustaining these efforts in Iraq, and then subsequently in Afghanistan. To what extent were those factors explicitly discussed at the PC or the NSC level, such that it was influencing decision-makers thinking on this?
Well, I have one vivid memory of the first point you make, which is the budget consideration. I remember in one of the presidential chaired NSC meetings during the fall review, the president came in, he was actually, it was clear from his body language that he was irritated. You know, he didn't launch right into the agenda that was specified for the meeting. He sort of sat back like this, and he said, "We'll get to the agenda here in a second, ladies and gentlemen." But who can tell me how much this is going to cost? If I approve the McChrystal recommendation for an additional $40,000, who can tell me how much this is going to cost me on an annual basis? And, you know, it's one of those uncomfortable times in the White House Situation Room, where everyone averts the gaze of the president, there's people turning around, talking to the people supporting Cast in the back row, but nobody's answering his question, right? And eventually, the figure that popped up in the conversation was $120 billion a year. For every year you sustained the surge at 100,000 U.S. troops, the estimate was that the total bill for U.S. involvement in Afghanistan would be $120 billion. Now, remember what else was going on in 2009, right? We're bailing out the car companies, we're bailing out the savings and loans, we're major financial crises, the worst financial crisis since the Great Depression. And we're asking the president to sign up, potentially indefinitely, for $120 billion a year. And the president, having received the $120 billion estimate at this meeting, said, "Well, this is my point." He said, "I just spent several hours this morning, working with the OMB, the budget team, trying to find several billion for early childhood education as an add-on to the budget." And frankly, I failed. I couldn't find, you know, a handful of billion. So then he pulled himself closer to the table and said, "Okay, now let's talk about $120 billion a year in Afghanistan." Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of the witnesses for their frankness today. Let me turn to General Nagata. I want to come back to the strategic calculus question for Pakistan. It's something we have discussed to some degree here. But I wanted to come back to your general sense, sitting in Pakistan. I want to focus in particular on what looks like it was a notable difference between how Pakistan strategically calculated their willingness and ability to work with the United States against Al Qaeda, and the willingness to work against the Afghan Taliban, recognizing, as you note, that there were other things, including the TTP, the Operations and SWAT going on. But how would you characterize Pakistan, particularly ISI's willingness to cooperate with us, AQ versus the Afghan Taliban, and what factors contributed to that?
Thank you. Excellent set of questions. I have a very vivid memory of when I was getting ready to deploy to Pakistan in 2009, and then after I arrived, I learned very quickly a fact that most Americans don't know, and that at that point in our conflict after 9/11, the Pakistanis had arrested or killed more Al Qaeda members and leaders than anybody in the world. And I think that may still be true today. We've certainly killed a lot of them, but it was an astonishing realization. I remember the first time I got briefed on this, the number, the enormous number of Al Qaeda operatives that they had taken off the board. Now, some of this obviously was their own interest, but a great deal of it was because we asked them to. Now, does that ameliorate, or does that excuse all of the other reasons we have to be irritated with Pakistan? No, but it's something that I think Americans forget at their own peril, because I think it distorts the role that Pakistan has actually played. In terms of the fight against the Taliban, that came later, as I indicated in my prepared remarks. As I was arriving, I learned about this enormous fight that was ongoing in the Swat River Valley, and it became very clear to me very quickly that they were shocked at how many casualties they were having to take to clear a settled area of Pakistan. This was not some remote mountainous valley. This was an area of the country that is famous for its winter skiing, but it had been taken over by the Taliban. So now, aside from whatever it was that Pakistan was doing to assist us with Al Qaeda, they now believed they had an existential threat to their own country coming from the Taliban, and they recognized that this was part and parcel of the larger problem the United States was dealing with in Afghanistan. Now, did that automatically translate into unlimited and useful cooperation with us against the Taliban? No, it did not. But they were frightened enough, and they were worried enough, that they started asking for our help in ways that previously were completely impossible.
So, follow-up question here, and this goes back to something that several have said so far. Looking back on it very briefly, what is your sense about what options we had to deal with the sanctuary in Pakistan? And this really, how do we think about it going forward?
Many of the options we had, we were trying to capitalize on, offering military assistance, sharing more intelligence, some rather predictable things. But the, one of the difficulties that I saw the U.S. government constantly had was doing something very difficult, but that was harmonizing what we were trying to do in Afghanistan with the degree of cooperation we needed from Pakistan, and the fact that Pakistan is an endless nuclear standoff with a U.S. ally called India. There were fits and starts attempts that I witnessed to try to make sense of these three realities, but it was so hard, and it was so complicated, and it was so difficult, that most of the time, whenever I saw an effort to harmonize three things, we just quit. "This is too hard, it's too complicated, I got better things to do." And so we never, to my knowledge, we never articulated to ourselves, how do we find a way to make these three imperatives, success in Afghanistan, success in the other two countries, in harmony with each other?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, you are recognized for your question.
Thank you all for your really important contributions to our work. I have two related questions, one for Ambassador Aikenberry and one for Ambassador Lute, and because they're related and both connected to the strategic-level decision-making, I'm going to pose them both upfront. Ambassador Lute, I thought your comment about the, what you characterized as the strategic disconnect between ambitious aims and more limited means is, to my mind, really gets to the heart of the matter. Thinking about means, though, not only in terms of resources, but also means in the sense of, what do the U.S. really have agency over? What could we control and not control? What capabilities does the U.S., in terms of its institutions and its politics, really have? I think means needs to be considered in that more expansive sense. And what I'd be interested in hearing from you on is about the decision-making and policymaking process, and whether the U.S. had sufficient self-awareness about these other aspects of means, whether there was space within the decision-making process. I mean, you've sat in countless inter-agency meetings, NSC meetings. Was there space in that process for people who might have and probably did have some doubts and questions about U.S. means to articulate that? To say, you know, if there's a disconnect between ambitious aims and limited means, was there space in the process to say, not just, well, we can't achieve, to call out what was unachievable, when that was observed and if that was observed? And my question for you, Ambassador Aikenberry, also about the what was and wasn't considered in the process, and what was there space made for in terms of honest doubt and debate to be expressed, is about the interaction of the military aspects of the surge strategy and the political aspects of what we were trying to achieve. And there have been many comments made by many analysts of the evidence of the U.S. working at cross purposes with itself, different agencies doing different things, you know, bags of cash, to some people, efforts to try to reduce corruption, on the other hand. Was the, in your sense, in your experience, did you have the, did you observe that these cross purposes, these tensions between the military and political aspects of the strategy? And did you observe those kinds of risks and tensions being genuinely debated and considered in the policy process? Thank you.
So first of all, on means. So the decision memo that reflected the fall 2009 review, I think, did appreciate that we weren't, we didn't have agency across everything required to build toward success. It identified four risk factors, which is, in other wording, could have been called assumptions, right? And here are the four risk factors. First of all, the government of Afghanistan. Did we have a reliable partner? Second, were we really able to build the Afghan security forces that would be as advertised, right? And things like illiteracy rates and corruption and so forth factored into the building of the army and police. The coalition. Would we be able to sustain the roughly one-third of resources provided by, other than the U.S.? So the NATO coalition and more broadly, other countries. And then finally, Pakistan. Could we change the strategic calculus of Pakistan? So the review in 2009 identified these four, and the one-year update in the December of 2010 period assessed all four of these. So I do think that there was an appreciation from the outset, that no matter how hard we tried, we weren't going to be able to just bully our way through to success here, that there were factors beyond our control. I also believe there was room for dissent. I mean, the public record now is pretty accurate with regard to the, at that time, Vice President Biden attempt to present an alternative to Stan McChrystal's recommended $40,000. And we spent several sessions, multiple hours each, in the White House Situation Room discussing that dissenting view.
Coach R., how much, we're at the red light, how much time?
Please go ahead, take two minutes, sir.
Okay. If I could come back also on step, very briefly, on Afghanistan, Pakistan, with the war in Pakistan, that we do have to remember that as we're trying to balance our relationship with Pakistan, as we're making that balance, it's undermining our efforts in Afghanistan, who the leadership there and the people are looking across the border at Pakistan. It's also, as our troops are getting hit in Afghanistan by sanctuaries coming out of Afghanistan, the question that was asked earlier about how do soldiers look at the time-limited surge, they also, over years, were looking at the sanctuary in Pakistan, and what were our leaders in Washington doing about it? With your question, Laurel, you started, you know, do we consider resources? And another discussion would be, how did we do on the civilian side with human resources? Numbers, okay, but it was not a system. Numbers, okay, but it was not a sustainable effort, and we have to look at how we were doing qualitatively to be sure. Your question, though, about the, you know, the broad inter-agency differences that existed, so the CIA was in Afghanistan to find and kill bin Laden and take out al-Qaeda. The military was there to help build Afghan, to fight the Taliban increasingly and to help build Afghan national security forces. The embassy and USAID were there to build political and governing institutions, to support diplomacy and help with development. And were those missions at times in great tension? Of course, they were. The Kabul Bank was an example, where the embassy view is not necessarily, not the correct view, it's where your priorities are. The embassy view was a massive act of corruption. It had to be dealt with in a way that would certainly undermine President Karzai, because some of his network was involved. Whereas, the CIA view and the military view was to be more flexible. Or, the Major Crimes Task Force of Afghanistan, trained very well by the FBI, gets great intelligence on somebody in President Karzai's staff, that important on his staff, that is involved in massive corruption. And the raid is conducted only to find out that this particular individual had other so-called relationships within the U.S. government. So, you could say that probably some of those kind of problems are going to exist, but in my view, they existed too often and it was very hard to get them resolved. It's, where is the priority in Washington, D.C.? Obviously, it began with al-Qaeda. Number two, it's keep the security for a time safe in Afghanistan so we can continue to operate. And very frankly, is the President as interested in how many women's schools, girls' schools were building or in progress against al-Qaeda? But we have to remember importantly, the American people were much more interested in that, too.
Thank you, Ambassador Eichenberry. Commissioner Malino, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. I want to join my colleagues in thanking the witnesses for their time here today, but also for your service. And Ambassador Eichenberry, to turn to you, give you another bite at the apple, potentially to continue from Laurel's question. First of all, thank you for your written statement and the depth that you went into. One thing that you really kind of get into in that statement is the lack of a reliable partner in the Afghan government. And I'm curious your thoughts on how those concerns about a reliable Afghan partner influenced the civilian-side surge efforts, like the efforts of the State Department, USAID, the PRTs. Over to you, sir.
Yeah, I do talk in the written statement about the difficulties of aligning with President Karzai and with the Afghan government. There are important reasons for that, and it's important, you know, going forward that we look at what those reasons were. You know, President Karzai and many of his fellow Afghan leaders, they did not see the war the way we did. We saw it as black and white, evil Taliban and a not-so-good government of Afghanistan, but a legitimate government of Afghanistan. And for, I think, many Afghan leaders, they didn't see the battlefield that way. This was historical, it, there were social issues involved, there were ethnic issues involved. I never think that we understood that this might have looked much more like a civil war than insurgency. There's other reasons as well, that we had problems with alignment. President Karzai, over time, he became increasingly critical of intrusion of our American military forces and indeed our civilians throughout his country, complaints about parallel governments being developed, criticisms that the real war was to be fought in Pakistan. And he told General McChrystal and I that very clearly when we briefed him on the surge and said to us that, as I see counterinsurgency that's written into your plan here, counterinsurgency means there might be some good Afghan citizens that are out there that are fighting what they consider to be an illegitimate government. And if such is the case, and we have foreign military forces from a non-Muslim country supporting us, then that can lead to jihad, and we will not have jihad in my country. So, if you want to fight Pakistan, I'm with you. If you want to continue bombing my villages, I'm not. It was that clear. To your question, then, about what did we do on the civilian side, I think here, you know, a good number of mistakes made by all of us and by our teams, but I think on this one issue about reporting with integrity, about the dilemmas that we were having in terms of now a divergence, increasing divergence of President Karzai and his administration with our preferred strategy.
I wonder, too, if we can dive into the structure. It's another element that you get into in the written statement. Were those efforts undermined by the same structural issues that you saw in Kabul?
Yeah, it's a great question. Here, you know, our goal is to try to get positive lessons as well, and working together with the military team, I think that we did have some success. So, innovations, the military has a, as they talk about, a core competency in planning, because they exist to deploy for unforeseen contingencies. The State Department is not noted for having a robust planning capacity, but we actually did create one in our embassy within the political-military section, and we saw much better results, and the military welcomed this. We'd had one other innovation that I think for the record here could be useful, you know, not doing this at scale, we hope, anytime soon, but we did find ways to unify, let's call it, the chief of mission or the embassy chain of command, call it, throughout Afghanistan. So, heretofore, where we had in regions, a civilian advisor to a military commander, we changed that to civilians, senior civilian representative, and he or she then had, within their purview and authorities, responsibilities for the many State Department, USAID, and agriculture teams spread throughout their region, where before it was provincial reconstruction teams scattered around the country, reporting back directly to the embassy. That had its limitations, but my sense is certainly on the embassy side, and I believe on the military side, they found that to be an innovation that's worthy of study if we have to do this again at lower levels.
Thank you. I think Ambassador Eichenberry really wants that gold star. You're nailing it on the time. Okay, so I see Das Sedney and Ambassador Lude, you have questions. I'll ask you to hold for the next round. I have noted that. So, Commissioner Mukapadhyay, I'd like to recognize you for your question.
Thank you so much, Co-Chair Chowdhury, and thank you so much to our witnesses for your service and for these very enlightening comments. I want to pull back a little bit. Ambassador Ludin described the Afghan state-building project as auxiliary, and Mr. Sedney said the U.S. never had a nation-building strategy. But Americans were told that the surge was grounded in a doctrine of counterinsurgency, and that project ostensibly is anchored in the restoration of the Afghan government's legitimacy, capability, and sovereignty. Even before the coin doctrine was unfurled in Afghanistan, the global war on terror was premised on this notion, right, that the Afghan government's credibility as a state, as the head of this, leadership of the state was necessary condition for American national security. So, Ambassador Eichenberry, you just relayed an exchange that President Karzai and you and General McChrystal had around the question of counterinsurgency, and I'm wondering if you can reflect a bit on the question of whether Afghan sovereignty actually was in the compelling national interest of the United States? And if so, why was it routinely undermined in the ways that President Karzai and others have described? And if it wasn't, then why bother with counterinsurgency at all? And a second question to Ambassador Ludin, from the Afghan government's perspective, what would a more effective American counterinsurgency strategy have looked like? Thank you.
So, very briefly, you know, you can have these political science debates of, is there a difference between nation-building and state-building? And nation-building, very comprehensive, you know, going into the social aspects versus state-building, which is more limited, get a government up and running, maybe good enough governance, not overly ambitious. And I would think that the American effort was more of the state-building, although it wasn't clear. And if we had gone with full nation-building for a prolonged way, it would have been extraordinarily difficult, extraordinarily difficult to achieve the goals that we thought maybe were possible when we first arrived in 2002. The second point I'd make, and I'll stop here, is then with regard, how did we look at Afghanistan? And as we looked at Afghanistan soon after the transitional government had been established, we were to increasingly look at Afghanistan through a set of institutions we were trying to create, governing institutions, political processes, that simply didn't exist. We were trying to get them to build up. But the Afghans and the power brokers, they were looking at the problem 90 degrees. They didn't see those institutions that we kept on pounding on the table about how much of progress we were making. So, it was two, it was two very different dialogues, but they tended, in their dialogues, to humor the Americans and talk about those institutions, but did they embrace them? And then lastly, with President Karzai in terms of his embrace, he had so many admirable qualities, but knowledge of, capacity to, or even interest in institution-building was not high on his list, and that caused dilemmas as well.
Ambassador Ludin, you are recognized to respond.
Yes. No, thank you for that question. Very quickly, before I get to the war and how it could have been more effective, but on the question of state-building as well, fundamentally, now, and I'm kind of regrettable that I'm saying this with benefit of hindsight, having thought about it all, it's impossible to do state-building or nation-building when a massive foreign force is fighting in your country. It's just by definition, whoever that is the leader of that certain state or country would not be legitimate, they wouldn't be seen as legitimate, and it wouldn't even, wouldn't even function, because it's bound to happen, these sort of tensions between the two spheres. So, I think we didn't recognize this at the time, or at least didn't speak about it. I think that was one of our mistakes. And connected to that is the question of war, and we're very much connected, because how it should have been done differently is that, at the outset, it should have been given out to Afghans. This whole counterinsurgency was not, I mentioned earlier a little bit, that, you know, the whole surge came as this big course correction in terms of the U.S. engagement, and therefore it's going to lead to different outcomes. We played along, we, by we, by being Afghans, on the Afghan side, because frankly, you know, this is how things used to happen, from my experience. They were, as I mentioned in my opening statement, two different spheres, they both had their own things, and then they interacted, and sometimes they, there were tensions, but a lot of times they sort of worked it out. But nobody really seriously looked at it critically about why do we need a surge in Afghanistan, where what we do need is a full Afghanization of the entire thing. It would have been difficult, it would have been more, it would have been impossible, but I think just leaving it to the Afghans would have been the best way at the time. And I know, as I said, it's only been
Ambassador Ludin, thank you. We have to move on. Just please close your thought if you'd like.
No, I've closed my thought.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ambassador Lude, you have one minute to follow up, and Das De Sedney, one minute as well, or less.
Okay. I just want to echo Carl Eichenberry's point about some innovations that took place that might have given us the promise of whole-of-government approach at the operational level. And here, I suggested to the Commission that you query Ryan Crocker, Commissioner Crocker, who actually pulled this off in Iraq, right? This is the commander and the ambassador co-locating their offices. This is signing, jointly signing a campaign plan. This is testifying before Congress together, not separately. This is seeing every congressional delegation, every executive branch visitor, together. And that's the kind of whole, that's what, that's what actually brings gravity to whole-of-government. And frankly, in the 20 years of Iraq and Afghanistan, we seldom pulled it off. So, we know how to do this, we just don't do it.
Two points. First, on Pakistan, we're missing a really big issue here, and that's the fact that the U.S. government at the highest levels did not trust the government of Pakistan at the highest levels. The Abbottabad raid was carried out without the knowledge of Pakistan, because we didn't trust Pakistan and we wouldn't tell them. That was based on years of trusting them and having them fail. But that lack of trust in Pakistan was laid behind a lot of the things that Ambassador, that General Magada talked about. And it was typified by the fact that our Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Admiral Mullen, had more bilateral meetings with the Chief of Staff of the Pakistani Army than any Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff had with any counterpart in history. He, Admiral Mullen, worked really hard. At the end of that, he believed he had been betrayed. So, that's the context within which these discussions happened. Secondly, on trusting President Karzai and President Karzai being a reliable partner. In 2009, we worked, and a person who's not here, and I'll criticize him anyway, Ambassador Holbrook, worked extensively. I was well aware of his efforts to try and defeat President Karzai in the election. So, for us, up until August, working to defeat President Karzai in the election and then say, we'd like you to be our reliable partner, was really not very smart on our part. He couldn't be a reliable partner, because we worked hard to stab him in the back for the previous six months. So, there's a lot going on here that we're not talking about, that need to be factored into the questions that we're talking about, that sometimes are more theoretical rather than real-life things that happened.
Commissioner Taft, you are recognized.
Thank you, and I would like to thank all the panelists for your very forthcoming and very helpful testimony. I have a question for Ambassador Ludin. Ambassador, in your written testimony, you indicate that your belief that President Karzai was the most legitimate national leader Afghanistan had in the post-2001 era. However, his leadership was systematically undermined by U.S. actions. So, my question to you really goes to the period at the beginning of 2009, right before the surge, at the beginning of the Obama administration. How would you describe, at that time, the relationship between the United States and the Afghan government and President Karzai? And in your view, what were the factors that caused friction or tension?
David Sedney just said something that could be like a good part of my answer to your question, sir. But I would also say that the Obama administration came in with some sort of a baggage, I think they were carrying on, there'd been two, the Bush administrations and mistakes, that Afghanistan war was considered a mistake by generally in the U.S. at the time, and so was Iraq. So, there was some degree of this being this liability that had to be taken care of, and President Karzai was really seen as symbolizing that failure, that failed U.S. engagement at the time. So, it started off by the most important friction that happened, which basically scarred the entire engagement in the years to come, and that was the elections of 2009, in the effort, as Mr. Sedney explained, to depose Karzai, and then he basically took it to heart. The other thing was, the other friction point between the two sides was what we talked about earlier, about the peace process. Fundamentally, this was supposed to be a point of convergence between the two sides, but the way things happened, President Karzai saw it as something that he should really be at the center of. It should revolve around him as the leader of the country. But this just didn't work. Pakistan vetoed it, they wouldn't want it like that, but I don't think the U.S. side also emphasized this point, that it has to, Karzai has to be at center. So, therefore, Karzai was, at best, a sort of an auxiliary figure in the process, and he was briefed, I'm saying And he was briefed, I'm saying that I'm witness to the fact that he was not excluded, but all the main discussions that happened were basically different, the two sides doing their own things and then consulting each other, rather than working together as a team. The issue of Kabul Bank, somebody referred to it earlier, Ambassador Ikenberg referred to it earlier, clearly there was, I think, there were people that were close to President Karzai's family, that were associated, but the way it was seen on the US side as be as putting the entire blame entirely on Karzai was not correct, because Karzai personally did not benefit from that, or from other agenda. I mean, to this day, I think the one thing that would not be put on Karzai is that he was corrupt, because this wasn't the case. But then Karzai saw this as an attack on him, the way the Kabul Bank fiasco unfolded. And ultimately, the other point of friction, if I remember, there's so many things, but one was this whole about the signing of the Strategic Partnership Agreement, where I was involved personally. So I think that was another point where they didn't, by then, they had started not seeing things eye to eye, the future, and as a result, even though President Karzai believed that the US continued engagement in Afghanistan was something that the country needed, but then he didn't want to be responsible for it, so he did not sign the VSA, and that was a major point of disruption between the two sides.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, you are recognized for your question.
Thank you. Let me also thank the witnesses for giving us time and your insights and for your service. I want to, I think Mr. Sedney noted the mantra of changing Pakistan's strategic calculus, and we've covered that quite a bit today, but I know Ambassador Ludeen also noted that he thought this was the most consequential mistake of the Afghan war, and I did want to come back to this in the end of this panel discussion. We've talked about many different factors. I think one factor that wasn't mentioned, and maybe addressing it first to maybe General Nagata, but then stepping back to the bigger-picture question, which may be addressed to you, Ambassador Lute, but specifically, many senior Pakistani, you know, military senior officials, you know, have noted that Pakistan's main strategic interest was to minimize Indian influence in Afghanistan, and that the Taliban were an important part of that strategy to achieve that objective. And that was, if that was their main strategic calculus, again, yet another example about how their strategic calculus and our strategic calculus were not aligned. And so I guess the bigger-picture question is, was it indeed possible to change Pakistan's strategic calculus, given that they were fundamentally at odds? And yet, we've heard, you know, that Pakistan was more important than Afghanistan, that coercion really wasn't an option, there's nuclear stability concerns, which are very real and concern, the TTP being aligned with the Afghan, so a lot of factors playing into why it was going to be very, very difficult to change Pakistan's decision-making and their strategic calculus. And yet, it does seem to have been a mantra and central to an assumption that it could be done. And so I guess the bigger-picture question is, can you describe, yet again, in terms of the policymaking discussions, how you grappled with this issue, the importance of Pakistan, the fundamental problem there? If our victory in Afghanistan was really dependent on that, but it didn't seem possible, how did we grapple that in policy discussions? Thank you.
I'll go ahead and start. To a degree, I would argue, we did change Pakistan's strategic calculus. It was painful, it was slow, it was halting, there were a lot of setbacks along the way. But as they became more and more concerned about the threat inside their own country, they rationally started becoming both more forthcoming and more desirous of our help. In my prepared remarks, I tried to articulate the trajectory we're on. There were, it was never friction-free, there were always problems, there were always dramas, but we were getting to the point where we were talking about large-scale, multi-area campaigning that the Pakistanis would conduct with US and coalition support. Unfortunately, for all the reasons I described, it all came to an end. How far would we have actually gotten? Would it eventually been enough to change the game and change our fortunes in Afghanistan? We'll never know, because we never got there.
So I think this is a major point of skepticism among the National Security Council members coming out of the fall 2009 review. We had several sessions solely committed to Pakistan's role in the fight in Afghanistan. And I think as the kind of factors that you outlined came to light for the principals, they realized that this was going to be an exceptionally ambitious campaign, to try to change a country's strategic calculus, when that country has an existential fixation on its neighbor, India, has an ongoing and critical insurgency itself, and is worried about its back door, Afghanistan, would be exceptionally difficult. And I think this played out, frankly, from the outset in the Riedel Report, because the Riedel Report has this very famous now mission statement, right? So disrupt, dismantle, and defeat al Qaeda. That's vital national interests in the wake of 9/11, right? And then the troublesome clause, prevent their return to either country. And it's that clause that got us hooked in a way that was, in my view, out of our means, outside of our ability to actually execute that mission.
I'd like to add to that, going back to the issue of trust. Royal Commissioners, New York Times reporter Carl Adigall, in her book Wrong Enemy: America in Afghanistan, makes a very clear statement that Osama bin Laden's presence in Abbottabad was not just facilitated to, but agreed to, and happened because of the agreement of the top leaders in Pakistan. And many people in the US government believe that Pakistan always played a double game. They did what General Nagata said, but at the same time, others were doing things such as, in my view, and I really urge you to talk to her, I can, will have to defer to the former Chief of Staff, or the Director of the Central Intelligence Agency at the time, but in my conversations with him, he expressed great doubt that there was ignorance of the presence of Osama bin Laden in Abbottabad at the top levels of the Pakistani government. So in that situation, if that's true, and I believe it's true, and many people, I think, believed it's true, if the top levels were cooperating with us on killing loss of al Qaeda, but at the same time, protecting the leader of al Qaeda, that's a very difficult, and I would say impossible, strategic problem to solve.
Could I just ask you to clarify something? You believe that it is true that the top levels of Pakistani leadership knew that bin Laden was there and that we're still keeping in there?
Yes, I have spoken to Carl Adigall, I've read her book, I've talked to other people about it, including, and I have to apologize, Jeremy, I've talked to the Director of Central, the person who was Director of Intelligence at the time, who also believed that. That's my understanding, and you have to speak to him, and again, you
And is this your
Yes, I do believe that.
Okay, is this your understanding based on your position inside government, not based on an external journalist's view, but based on your own awareness of information?
As our intelligence agencies repeatedly said, we had absolutely no hard evidence to that effect, so it was all inferential reasoning based upon the evidence of actions. But no, there was never any direct evidence, and if you're a really good intelligence agency, there never will be direct evidence. But the absence of evidence doesn't mean that something didn't happen.
This is an important line of questioning for us. The next hearing we have in the fall will focus on the bin Laden raid and the impact on US-Pakistan relations, so thank you for bringing that up, David. General Nagata, I was actually going to ask you if you'd like to respond, so please go ahead.
Yes.
We are over time, but just please take one minute.
I will be very brief. I will go to my grave convinced that the Pakistanis did not know Osama bin Laden was in Abbottabad. The Pakistani intelligence service, and both the civilian side and the military side, they're good at some things, but good intelligence is not one of them. And aside from the fact that I asked our own intelligence leaders, US intelligence leaders in Pakistan, did they know, and they all told me absolutely, they absolutely did not know, they don't have the ability to know. My own experience with how the Pakistanis do intelligence work convinces me they did not know.
Okay, for our audience, this is just a perfect example of what we all lived through, the intellectual dysphoria of the war. And it illustrates just how hard our job is, but thank you for your candor and your honesty here. Colin and I were just talking about how we couldn't have had a better panel. All of you were so articulate and offered kind of your deep insights, both from the moment of the policy kind of formation and also in hindsight, so we very much appreciate that. I'm going to give you all a gold star. I know I just promoted all the generals, which is great. And we look forward to bringing you back for more private discussions as well. So for the audience, please give us a few moments. We will take five-minute break, Commissioners, and then we'll transition panels. But again, thank you to our witnesses, have a great day. But again, thank you to our witnesses. Have a great day. To begin our second panel. All right, thanks, everyone. We'll now begin our second panel. This panel will assess how the surge was implemented from civilian, military, and Afghan perspectives. Our American and Afghan witnesses will examine the challenges of civil-military coordination, evolving objectives, and the disconnect between policy decisions in Washington and realities on the ground. We'll also explore how and why Afghans and Americans viewed the Taliban threat differently and how those views shaped their decisions. Our first witness participating by Zoom is retired Lieutenant General Daniel Bolger of the U.S. Army, who was commander of NATO's training mission in Afghanistan from 2011 to 2013. From 2003 until 2010, General Sher Karimi served as Chief of Operations of the Afghan National Army before transitioning to be Chief of the General Staff in 2010, a position he held until 2015. Our next witness, Ambassador Don Laberry, was coordinator for the Interagency Provincial Affairs Office at the U.S. Embassy in Kabul from 2009 to 2011. Ambassador Tony Wayne held the position of Coordinating Director for Development and Economic Affairs at U.S. Embassy Kabul from 2009 through 2010 and was subsequently appointed Deputy U.S. Ambassador to Afghanistan from 2010 until 2011. Our final witness, retired Brigadier General Michael Meese of the U.S. Army, served as Assistant Chief of Staff for the International Security Assistance Force from 2010 to 2011. Lieutenant General Bolger, you are recognized for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Co-Chair Chowdhury, and Co-Chair Jackson, and all distinguished members of the Afghanistan War Commission. Thanks so much for this opportunity to talk with you today regarding the implementation of the surge in Afghanistan. I really welcome this opportunity, and I pledge to provide you with my forthright and honest assessments. I really owe that to the brothers and sisters with whom I served, especially those we lost. From autumn of 2011 through spring of 2013, I commanded the Three Star Advisory Organization in Afghanistan that was known as NATO Training Mesh in Afghanistan and also known as Combined Security Transition Command Afghanistan. It's two names for the same outfit. We were composed of a division's worth of people, about 18,000 advisers, trainers, and sustainers. About a quarter of them were in uniform, and those folks came from 39 separate countries, NATO and non-NATO partners. The rest of them were contractors, some from outside the country, some from Afghan society itself. Now, in that capacity, we administered basically an F-35 program. Eleven billion dollars a year worth of security assistance in terms of services, in terms of weapons, in terms of equipment, in terms of buildings, all that. During my time in command, nine from our ranks died. Several more were wounded. There was no lack of effort, but still, you know the results of this mission. Our primary task was to build and sustain Afghan national security forces, the Army, the Small Air Force, and the police. And the basic idea was that Afghan troops would replace NATO forces, mostly Americans. Or to quote the more clever people who came up with this kind of slogan, "As they stand up, we stand down." It was a catchy phrase. It briefed well. In the Vietnam War, this was called "Vietnemization." It didn't work there either. In building Afghan security forces, we made some fundamental mistakes. And by "we," I mean guys like me, the people wearing stars. First, we tried to do too much ourselves. Our Afghan counterparts, experienced soldiers like General Karimi, who you'll hear from shortly, they knew what they wanted, and they knew what their fellow Afghans would accept and support. It was their country. Rather than let it do it their way, we insisted on doing it our way. Did we ever? We were so busy saving Afghanistan that we ignored the people most invested in saving their own country. Second, we tried to use our ample money and our able people as substitutes for a real commitment. Our Afghan partners wanted us to commit a real treaty backed by a real long-term troop presence. Think Korea after the 1953 armistice. And in Afghanistan, I doubt we'd have needed to leave more than a division's worth of troops, and that would include our allies. The Taliban greatly feared such a long-term American and coalition commitment. Sadly, so did we. We forgot what we already understood about combat advising, and this is the third major point. A successful Afghan force required training and equipping to standard, side-by-side coalition advisers, and a coalition partner unit that would share the fight and demonstrate success. We learned this over and over again in Korea, in Vietnam, in El Salvador, in Iraq, and in Afghanistan. And we flushed it away and gave in to wishful thinking. Then we wonder why we lost. What went right in this war involved the men and the women who fought it. Most of the people I fought alongside during my time in Afghanistan were not Americans. Wars among the people always feature a lot of the locals that share our cause. Like our enemies, our Afghan comrades were almost all Muslims. In addition, the Afghanistan War included many partner countries, from longtime allies like Australia or Britain or Canada, newer teammates like El Salvador, Korea, Mongolia, many others. All that help meant a lot, though we didn't always appreciate it enough at the time. But we can never forget those others and their many sacrifices. In the end, though, the outcome rode on the United States. Look, we didn't start the war. Once it began, though, we drove the pace and the course of the conflict. At the tactical level, which is Army talk for the realm of vicious firefights and night raids, the courage, discipline, and lethality of our Americans in uniform stand with anything accomplished in our Great Civil War, both World Wars, Korea, or Vietnam. That all went right. It's high time we learned what went wrong, and we must fix it. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, sir. General Karimi, you are recognized for your opening statement. And please use the microphone.
Commissioners, co-chairs, ladies and gentlemen, good morning or good afternoon, good morning. Still, we have early morning. I would like to thank the Afghan War Commission for inviting me to this hearing and gave me the opportunity to share my thoughts with you on the war in Afghanistan. In the initial years, it was thought that the Taliban are defeated. On the contrary, the Taliban regrouped toward the end of 2005 and began to fight against the friendly forces in the Afghan National Army. We were building an army as if it were peaceful time. Instead, it was a nation at war. Some European troops contributors who had not signed up for a shooting war were shocked. Troops were not enough, and every commander was asking for more troops. In addition, the ANA that had been built up to the time was not capable of carrying the fight without international support. In response, in 2009, President Obama agreed on troop increase, what was called surge, a big increase in troops with a clear end date when they would leave, a strong effort to clear and hold ground before holding it over to Afghan security forces. It was encouraging to have 30,000 extra international troops. I thought it would make a positive change and boost Afghan security forces morale. Unfortunately, with troops withdrawal in 2011 and 2012, the morale of Afghan forces dropped, coalition troops were disappointed, the enemy became bolder. From 2011 onwards, situation became more complicated. Many ISAF bases closed. Misunderstanding between President Karza and the coalition military and political leaders developed. This caused further confusion. The coalition was reluctant to provide additional support to the Afghan government. The Afghan government blamed the U.S. and NATO for collateral damages, particularly civilian casualties. There was a lack of coordination. Logistically, Afghan army was totally dependent on the United States. Afghan government was weak and corrupt. ANA was constantly under improper political influence. This resulted in the army as an institution being distracted from developing professionally. Nepotism and factionalism mind ruined the ANA. Mujahideen leaders were more influential in the army than the well-trained professional leadership. Even professional leaders at times were absorbed in factions under the command of the warlords. Appointments in the army were made on the basis of political connections, not on the account of merit and professionalism. Coalition forces also had their own internal problems. Some were not willing to fight. They had their own logistics problems on top of their national caveats. As for the Afghan government, nepotism, disobedience, corruption, narcotics, interference of parliament members and ministers, as well as Mujahideen factions, all contributed to the ultimate collapse of the state. Neighbors' interference and lack of unity within the coalition and destructive activities of Russia and China caused additional problems. Pakistan has to be mentioned separately for playing a double role of showing U.S. a superficial loyalty and, at the same time, harboring Taliban, training, supporting, and sheltering them. Since the time given to me is short, details will be discussed during the question and answer. Thank you.
Thank you, General Karimi. Ambassador Laberry, you are recognized for your opening statement.
Thank you. To the members of the commission...
Please check it again. That mic has been giving us some issues.
Can you hear me now? Ah, sorry.
Perfect.
To the members of the commission and the co-chairs, I thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the 2009-2011 civilian uplift and applaud you for your initiative in examining this topic. In my written testimony, I have described the nuts and bolts of the civilian surge, what we did and how we did it, along with lessons learned from the experience. I would like to use my time now to expand on what I consider to be the positive elements of the surge, the challenges faced during implementation, and provide a more detailed context of the lessons learned included in my testimony. I base my views on the experience that I had as the coordinator of the Interagency Provincial Affairs Office at U.S. Embassy Kabul 2009 to 2011 and also as the first senior civilian representative counterpart to the commander of Regional Command East in Bagram. In addition, I have additional experience as USAID Mission Director in Iraq and other conflict zones in Sub-Saharan Africa. And I just want to clarify for the record that while my parent agency was USAID, I was actually seconded to the embassy directly and did not have responsibility for USAID activities. While there are many debates about the pros and cons of the civilian surge, the policy was set and orders were given. The initial goal was to triple the number of civilians in the field from 320 in 2009 to 1,261 by 2011. And to a large extent, that goal was achieved. As of December 2011, about 91% of the positions were filled. And of the initial 320 civilians, where there were 40 or 50 that had served in the PRTs, by 2011, we had over 400 civilians serving as counterparts and not just advisers to military commanders in 75 to 80 locations throughout the country, down to the district level. While staffing up was a notable achievement on paper, the process devolved into a numbers game, largely driven by Washington with an overwhelming focus on metrics to the detriment of recruitment of necessary skill sets for the field. Agencies were judged by their ability to fill quotas, not by the quality of the candidates placed. And we all know that it's the kind of staff recruited that's most important. The challenges to such a ramp up in such a short time were numerous. Agencies were neither prepared nor organized to staff up the stage at the pace required. Much of the training that was done focused on security preparation, and not enough time was spent on orientation to the field environment, cultural norms and practices, or rudimentary language. Consequently, staff arrived, often not understanding and/or were unprepared to implement the mission at hand. I think it's necessary to state explicitly that ramping up the surge was not a kumbaya moment for civilian agencies, and achieving the designated numbers happened in spite of and not because of agency processes and procedures. It's also important to note that there were real administrative and human costs associated with staffing and initiative not previously planned for. Unfortunately, these changes result in bureaucratic knife fights in D.C. and the field, which take time to resolve and impact implementation. Unlike the military, which has spent years training for joint command, the interagency remains largely siloed and bureaucratically protective of budgets, personnel, and mandate. While increasing personnel was the first priority, establishing unity of effort among civilian agencies, along with civ-mil integration at levels not previously achieved, was a strategic point of departure for the civilian uplift. To accomplish this, as was stated previously, the Interagency Provincial Affairs Office was established at the embassy, and this was the focal point for management of PRTs and the USG civilian uplift. At the field level, a new organizational approach was developed so that every level of military command would have a co-equal senior civilian representative of equal rank. The new design also called for the senior representative to be given the equivalent of Chief of Mission Authority. These two significant changes had never been instituted before and were crucial to achieving civ-mil unity of effort and providing an enabling structure for the civilian uplift. However, no one knew if the structures would work, and indeed, there were struggles. Changing norms and behaviors is a long-term process. The previous structure had called for civilians to serve as advisers to the military and not co-leaders. But the new structure was there to enable civilian input so that it would not be lost in the cacophony of the military's battle rhythm. Similarly, civilian staff were used to reporting directly to their respective agencies in Kabul and not acting as mini-country teams. So rather than reinventing the wheel in any future civ-mil engagement, I believe this model could be a point of departure for the commission to study and urge you to examine the lessons learned from the regional platforms highlighted in the documents submitted for the record. A field test of the COIN counterinsurgency civ-mil effort occurred in RC East in 2009 with the execution of Operation Extreme Makeover. While achieving significant security, governance, and development results and becoming a poster child for success of the civilian surge, a critical mass of similar achievements was unable to be reached throughout the country in the limited timeframe designated. Expectations for the speed at which results could be achieved were highly unrealistic. The civilian uplift only reached its zenith just as the overall strategic policy shifted from stabilization to transition, a plan that called for a significant drawdown of resources. Consequently, the effort that had gone into recruiting personnel and establishing new structures and platforms out to the district levels wound up being transformed into a drawdown plan. Others have noted, and I will reiterate, the strategic failure of not having an exit strategy. Rather than a drawdown plan, resources could have been allocated differently to more fully align with specific sustainability goals. For example, more effort could have been put at the provincial level for the budget processing, and additional effort could have been put on the district delivery program to assist the government of Afghanistan capacities at local levels. While many inputs and outputs were delivered, the stated outcome of the surge, to move from a counterinsurgency to a stabilization environment and eventually to an Afghan-managed government, security, and development status that served the population, was not achieved. Technically, the operation may have been a success, but the patient died. I'll highlight more of the lessons learned in Q and A.
Thank you. And I would just like to draw the attention of the audience and the commissioners to Ambassador Laberry's written testimony, which is extremely rich in detail and expands upon her oral statement. Ambassador Wayne, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. I'm going to talk a lot today about this period of time, but I will mention that I did work on Afghanistan at the very start when I was Assistant Secretary of State for Economic and Business Affairs and organizing those first international gatherings and coming up with plans to help Afghanistan. And then after serving Afghanistan, I came back later on with a number of other former officials to sort of look at where we were, and this was 2016 on, and offer comments on that going forward. on that going forward. But let me focus today, and they are in the written testimony, I have some of those ideas. But today, I'm going to focus on 2009 through 2011. I returned to Afghanistan in 2009 and were able to build upon a number of the development-oriented and other non-military steps that we'd been taking to help strengthen the Afghan government in that period of time. That included all that we've been doing in education and health, for example, where there were a lot of improvements, and there were more to be made during this period. We did not learn as well how to help build a stronger Afghan government and government institutions to deal with the dynamics of Afghan politics during that period, and this remained a challenge as we're going forward. Our development and aid programs were not effectively designed and synced with security assistance, and so that was a constant effort that we were making during this period of time. How could we bring them closer together? Nor were our government assignment and personnel policies designed to provide the length of experience and expertise that were really needed to have a maximum positive impact with our Afghan partners in doing this. On the micro level, our military commanders were with our development specialists and often with occasional diplomats, either serving there or coming through, trying to figure out what's the best way to do things. And there was a lot to be learned from that. But very sadly, there was a lot of relearning that went on between generations of American officials in all of our different services coming together and doing that. We still poorly understood Afghanistan, and I know there were a number of efforts aimed at improving that. But a lot, too many of us were learning a lot on the ground as we went forward there. And we didn't develop with our Afghan partners an effective plan also to deal with the Taliban, I think, to learn from them and go forward. There were different plans in different places, and they worked to different degrees. And in fact, it's important to note that eventually the Taliban were able to mobilize recruits based on the U.S. image as a foreign invader. And I could see this developing, especially during the end of my time there, and they continued to be developed as we went forward. The Taliban were able to regroup, to rebuild in Pakistan. We did not develop an effective strategy, as we've talked already a little bit about, either in Pakistan or from Afghanistan, working into Pakistan and different areas to really counter that over time. And eventually, it was very costly, I think, to us. And it built up quite a bit of anti-American sentiment in not only Afghanistan but in parts of Pakistan as we were moving forward. Three U.S. administrations worked on this, but we were unable to develop a long-term vision, strategy, and timetable for Afghanistan. Once the U.S. decided that it needed to help build some basic institutions in the country to assure U.S. interests, we need to be willing to plan for a time, the time that it takes to create these institutions, and we had to do that, I think, realistically. And we did not do it realistically. We rushed at the end, and our own timetables were sped up. The Obama administration, you could see this from the surge in the Obama administration, you could see all this coming together. We didn't successfully figure out how best to aid the Afghans to build institutions and capacities that were good enough to produce positive results and that they could run largely by themselves. This was a challenge, and it was especially clear on the public security and military side, where you needed solid institutions to do that. But it was also clear on the diplomatic and government side in trying to provide services to people. In the final years, this was sort of highlighted when we saw some, and you'll get to talk about this in your subsequent hearings, I know, and you know it very well. But you could see the weaknesses when our military contractors had to pull out and a lot of the Afghan military just collapsed, wasn't able to function without that support. And that, of course, was later on. We didn't sufficiently realize that our own spending was reinforcing corruption and undermining governments, governance, and we really need to work hard on that. There was rarely a price immediately that had to pay for corruption, but by not building effective anti-corruption institutions that were largely led by Afghans, we undermined a lot of the progress that was being made, and this consistently came back to us. We boosted the Afghan economy in ways that weren't sustainable. I see my light flashing here, let me jump ahead. We did not develop sufficient strategies for dealing with the weaknesses among our Afghan partners, including ways to overcome their factionalism and tensions between a constitution that promoted a strong central government and the reality where many Afghans didn't want a strong central government. They were quite happy to have stronger regional governments, and that tension continued throughout this period of time. It was a big challenge to encourage, continue to encourage, the development of democratic institutions. Took a lot of time and coaxing to help our Afghan partners who wanted, many of them wanted these institutions, actually become effective. And then there were those Afghans who were part of our coalition who didn't want these to become effective. And so that was a constant struggle throughout this period of time. Just to note, one of our strongest points was the development of a very capable generation of young leaders, young Afghans. They were those that we could really count on going forward, but they were not in many positions of authority. And it was very hard to boost them, to get them into these positions of authority, because there were many others who were important, who were out there doing that. There's a number of lessons that I hope you'll look at in my written statement, where I try to look through the whole period of time and outline what I think are some of the basic lessons that we should have learned. Many of us did learn, many of those listening to me learned these going forward. And there's a lot that we can take from this experience in Afghanistan and apply not just to Afghanistan but to future invitations for the United States to become involved in other disputes. So I look forward to talking about that and other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Wayne. Brigadier General Mees, you are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Co-chairs Chowdhury and Jackson, distinguished commissioners, thank you for your service and your dedication. I'm honored to provide some insights that may be helpful for you. As a professor of economics and head of the Department of Social Sciences at West Point, I attended President Obama's December 1st, 2009 speech in Eisenhower Hall at West Point, where he announced the surge and outlined his objectives in Afghanistan. Twenty-five days later, I deployed to Afghanistan to coordinate the initiation of Joint Task Force 435, the Detentions Task Force. Then in 2010, when General Petraeus replaced General McChrystal, I deployed to Afghanistan as the Assistant Chief of Staff, working for General Petraeus and the French three-star chief of staff for a year. I was involved in the implementation of the policy that you're discussing today at the ISAF headquarters during that surge of forces, including the presentation of metrics and tracking of those metrics to monitor, to assess what was going on, the assessment concerning the surge of forces, and several other cross-cutting political-military issues. With regard to metrics, we did have a lot of robust processes that presented the data to the command as frequently as daily, and we rolled those up in sometimes painful, day-long, quarterly, strategic campaign assessment conferences. The data was voluminous, it covered nearly everything that could be measured, and was helpful in assessing trends. But my assessment is it provides a fraction of what commanders needed to know to make decisions. The challenge in a counterinsurgency or any other human endeavor is not that there's not any group of metrics that will ever be able to directly correlate or combine with the objectives of policy that define the coalition's broad strategic objectives. With regard to the spring 2011 decision to withdraw the surge of forces and the analysis for that, that was very tightly contained with very few people advising President, or General Petraeus in his recommendation to the President. All of us understood that whatever recommendation he would make would be considered in the context of the civil-military-political environment in Washington at the time. The Abbottabad raid that killed Osama bin Laden on May 2nd took place just as the recommendation was being finalized, but to my knowledge, did not directly affect the analysis for the needs of forces in Afghanistan, at least from the Afghanistan side of it. Raids like Abbottabad took place every night against the Taliban in the area, and in our view, these operations and others needed to continue to accomplish the objectives in Afghanistan. Beyond the metrics and the withdrawal recommendations you specifically asked about, there were four other parts of the surge in 2010 to 12 that I think are important. The first of these is what I call expeditionary economics, which complements military operations to restore a functioning society. Resourceful commanders, diplomats, and development experts like Ambassador Laberry created several ad hoc solutions before and during the surge, which were previously mentioned, like senior civilian representatives and especially provincial reconstruction teams, that ensured most brigade-level commanders had senior civilians coordinating non-security activities. We also implemented the Commander's Emergency Response Program funds that provided 3.7 billion in funding for commanders to support economic projects in the battle space. There were also larger projects, such as the DoD Task Force for Business Stabilization Operations. The Commission should consider, will we do any of these in the future, and if so, how? How should PRTs, SERP spending, and specialized business stabilization task forces or other successful efforts be integrated into our operations, training, doctrine, and resourcing for future effectiveness? Second issue is detention operations. In both Iraq and Afghanistan, we created ad hoc joint task forces, JTF-134 in Iraq and 435 in Afghanistan. Once we got it started, JTF-435's leadership, under their leadership, detention operations transformed from a strategic liability to an operational asset by implementing a comprehensive case management system, establishing review boards, and creating rehabilitation programs. The Commission should consider, how should detention operations be better planned or implemented if we're going to do this in the future? The third area that's already been mentioned is countering corruptions. H.R. McMaster and I actually flew over on the same plane, and as I was doing my work, he established the Combined Joint Interagency Task Force, SHAFAFiat, that identified criminal patron networks that undermines security gains. Recognizing corruption's potential in warfare and taking affirmative preventative steps, whether through task forces like SHAFAFiat or other means, is another important lesson from Afghanistan. Finally, another point that's been mentioned before, our international partners made significant political and military contributions in Afghanistan. During 2010 to 11, nearly 50,000 of the 150,000 troops that were in-country outside of Afghanistan came 49 nations other than the United States. Those 50,000 troops managed three of Afghanistan's six regional commands, they significantly expanded military capability, and they freed U.S. soldiers from some operations. We should recognize these nations' contributions and consider how to partner with them more effectively in the future. To bring this full circle, my son was a West Point cadet when I served in Afghanistan. Upon graduation, he led an artillery platoon in Shawalekot, Kandahar at Kop Little Blue. Now he's a major in the Army's 75th Innovations Command, where he develops new concepts for the Army's future. I hope that the Afghanistan War Commission will provide not just broad strategic observations but practical lessons that he and others can use to help prepare our nation for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I yield myself five minutes to begin the questions. Lieutenant General Bolger, I'd like to start with you. When you arrived in Afghanistan as commander, the surge was pretty much in place, and I'd like to hear from you kind of what your observation was of the state of the Afghan National Army and the National Police. What did it look like? What kinds of problems did you observe? And what did you respond to as you started your tour there?
All right. Great question, and I definitely can remember those days very, very clearly, especially after this morning's discussion and hearing from General Karimi in particular. What we saw was that the surge had definitely suppressed the Taliban's momentum. It hadn't defeated them, that hadn't happened yet, but they definitely were on their back foot. And the opportunity was there for the Afghan National Army, Air Force, Police to complete fielding of their forces. They were building to an overall strength of about 352,000, and the numbers were present. In other words, you could recruit people. Afghanistan did not have a draft, they got the people by voluntary service. The numbers were there. The challenge was keeping the people in the service and quality. And keeping the people in the service was difficult. You know, people were posted a long way from their homes, they wanted to go home on leave, sometimes they didn't come back, so there was a desertion problem that at points ranged up to about a third of the force. This shouldn't surprise us, because if we go back in our own history, during our own revolution, during the American Civil War, similar desertion rates were often seen. They're pretty common when you fight in your own country, something thankfully in America we don't have to do, not lately, and I hope never again. But Afghanistan did have to do it, and so there was an aspect of that. And then the other thing I mentioned in terms of quality, through no fault of their own, the folks joining the Afghan forces were by and large illiterate and innumerate. Only about 15% of the adult male population was literate, even smaller percentage of the adult female population. And so one of the first things we had to do, you know, if you join the American military before you go to basic training or boot camp, you know, you take a physical exam, you do all that kind of stuff. One of the things we had to do with those folks joining the Afghan military was actually give them literacy and numeracy training so they would know enough to be able to function in a military environment, to take and receive orders, to work with the weapons, all that kind of thing. It was kind of like a, and it wasn't intended this way, but it became an incentive to service, almost like a G.I. bill. But it was a challenge in terms of quality. One thing I really want to highlight, and it's something we need to keep in mind whenever we discuss this war and this phase of the war, even though there was a surge going on, even though the United States and its partners had sent in more forces, the majority of the casualties suffered every year that I was there, 2011, 2012, 2013, were Afghan soldiers, police, Air Force, Afghan local police. They were out fighting, and we should never forget that part. They were carrying the weight of the war on their back, and they were suffering the price for that. There was no lack of want-to from the Afghan side. There were some lack of skills, there were certainly lacks of equipment, and that's the kind of stuff that myself and my team tried to work with General Karimi and others to remedy.
And just as a follow-up, in your written testimony, you say that the U.S. abandoned our typical approaches with training combat advisors. Could you be more specific about why that happened? And I'm wondering if that was something specific to the context of Afghanistan, or was it something more about the nature and readiness of the U.S. force?
Well, the answer is both. There was, the U.S. force until, at least speaking for my service, the Army, we didn't have established conventional advisory commands till 2017. You know, we figured it out after both Iraq and Afghanistan had largely drawn down. Every year was a different way that we would get advisors. Some came out of unit ranks, some were formed units from the Army Reserve or National Guard that were brought in and given that as a job. We got people from other services, from other countries, individual replacements. You know, General Mike Mees mentioned his son. My son was one of the guys sitting in that auditorium at Eisenhower Hall as a class of 2010 West Pointer. He ended up in both Iraq and Afghanistan, and in Afghanistan, he was an advisor, a job he'd never really trained for, even though he was a tank officer, an armor officer. And so we ourselves had trouble picking and training advisors. We never did it the same way twice. Even in the year and a half that I was there, it was always a different setup. Again, we might have solved that with the Army Security Force Assistance Brigades that we formed in 2017, but I noticed that a lot of them are being reduced out of the force now because, quote, "We're never going to do this again." I think the guys from Vietnam told me that. But the other thing that I would mention along these lines, and it's worth noting, is there was also a philosophical issue that happened in Afghanistan after I left, but I think it was very, very dangerous, and it's one we need to think about. And this also bled over into Iraq, although that's not the subject of this commission. And that is the idea that you can be an advisor and stay— And that is the idea that you can be an advisor and stay at a headquarters somewhere and sort of, you know, stick pins in the map and look at computer diagrams and not go, as we used to say in Dari, shona bas shona, shoulder to shoulder, or pashto, ooga pa ooga, shoulder to shoulder. You've got to share the environment to be an effective advisor. Our special forces know this, this is the way they trained it at the Joint Forces, at the John F. Kennedy Center at Fort Bragg. I mean, we've known this for years. And we used that for most of the time we were in Iraq and in Afghanistan as well, and then we deviated from it after the major U.S. drawdown started in 2014. We started to put our advisors at a higher and higher level. Again, that is not an effective means of advice. You've got to put your advisors at risk, and yes, you will suffer casualties, but it's the only effective way of advising, combat advising, especially in an environment where the two sides don't speak the same language. In that case, physical example is the strongest form of advising.
Thank you. There's that theme of risk aversion coming up again. And my final question to you is, did you, in your role at the time, did you feel like you had the space and opportunity to report up the chain, what the vulnerabilities you were observing with the Afghans or within our own forces were? Did you, in fact, do that, or did you feel reluctant? And the reason I'm asking is it's come up in many of our conversations with veterans that there was a lot of, kind of watering down of the assessments and the information going up the chain and into Washington about what was actually happening on the field.
Well, one good thing about being a three-star general is I was about four or five ranks past where I ever thought I was going to be. So it was very easy for me, at least, to give my honest opinion to my superiors. I don't think they always wanted to hear it. I will say Ambassador Liberi used a very interesting term, the numbers game, and she was talking about it in terms of the civilian surge, but I will tell you, there was very much a numbers game with the Afghan National Security Forces. I think with the idea that numbers were hard data, there was a great appetite, and General Mike Meese referred to it when he talked about all the metrics they were collecting, but there was an appetite in-country and in Washington. Just give me the nose count. Just tell me how many people are in the Afghan police this month. Just tell me how many deserted. Just tell me how many went through training. Just tell me how many have M16 rifles. Numbers are great, but at a certain point, you need to get the assessment of experienced combat commanders. Hey, can these guys fight? Are they taking the casualties because they're shoulder to shoulder with us doing their job? Or are they taking the casualties because they don't know what they're doing and they're getting overrun? And that aspect, that one, I think is tough for people to put up the chain. I'm fortunate, my chain of command was very tolerant of me, they would listen to what I had to say, they didn't always agree with it, and they sure didn't always act on it. They at least let me have my say, and I appreciated that. And I will say, that was true not only to the U.S. chain of command, but also when I worked with them, reported to NATO aspects as well. They were willing to hear it, but in some cases, in fact, a lot of cases, we were too busy, train was moving too fast, decisions already been made, thank you for your input for national defense, get on with it. And so, like many, I did.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a, there's this other recurring theme of just the existence of dissent at various levels of the system, and we're learning very much that at the higher levels, there was definitely more space to express that and not at the lower levels. So thank you for that. I will yield my time and recognize Coach Er Jackson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the panel, as was stated by one of the speakers, I think Ambassador Lute in the last panel. It was one thing to make decisions in Washington, but the people who were left to implement them are the people who are here with us on this panel, and so thank you for sharing your insights. We're very seized on the Commission by the distinction between the war in Washington, the war in Kabul, and the war in the field, and hopefully we can probe the second two of those in this group. My question is for General Meese on sort of two fronts. One, if you could characterize or explain for a lay audience what the theory of victory, for lack of a better term, was from the command's point of view during the surge? What was the sort of series of events we thought would roll out, leading to some positive political outcome, not unlike the one that we saw at the turnaround in Iraq?
I think in a word, it would, it's a comprehensive counterinsurgency campaign. And what that indicates is it is putting together all of the elements of power, obviously military, security forces, building up the Afghan National Security Forces and all of their elements, combining that with enhancing governance through the partners from the State Department and the provincial reconstruction teams, building increased legitimacy for the government, as well as improving the quality of life for individuals through things like, as I described, expeditionary economics, using SERP funding and those sorts of things, always with the capacity to be able to build that capacity in provinces and in areas where there is conflict, so that there is greater respect for the legitimacy of the government. That's tied to, you've got to have a legitimate government that people will start to respect, but that's the theory of the case of a comprehensive counterinsurgency campaign, and there's a bunch of other pieces to that as well.
So I guess my follow-on question, from your point of view, at the end of your tenure and General Petraeus's tenure, where did you think we were in that process? And then what was the military case for the extension of the surge? Because this was sort of one of the major, you know, paths not taken in our story.
Yeah. I think in tying it in, I was able to sit through the first panel and tying all of that together. I think it's important for the commissioners to recognize, as you're talking about it, you've got the decisions in Washington, you've got a four-star headquarters with ISAF relating very closely with the embassy, but that also has 49 other countries, reports both to Washington and to Joint Forces Command, Brunson, as a NATO headquarters, so that has some help to be able to help you implement decisions. And then that's being flowed down to General Rodriguez at the ISAF Joint Command, which is the three-star headquarters, implementing that. To the side, you've got your three-star detention headquarters, you've got your three-star NATO training mission, which General Bolger commanded. The reason why I mention that is when Ambassador Lute, and I remember him coming over on his 2010 inspection tour, where he says, okay, we've got these things that we're trying to measure that's part of the strategy that is coming from Washington. Well, those of us that are implementing it on the ground are adjusting it and modifying it and shifting it in different ways, which end up with a different kind of outcome. And it's not a deliberate, you know, people in Washington would say this is deliberate mission creep, where we're trying to do much more, we're going from 84 provinces to 106 provinces. Well, no, that's because the facts on the ground changed, and commanders on the ground are implementing things in those ways that make it different, but it makes it very frustrating in Washington when you hear those sorts of things. So I don't know whether that answered it or not.
Yeah. No, it definitely, I think, gets at the difficulty of implementation. I guess the remaining question I would have is, and this is to paraphrase General Petraeus's line from Iraq, "Tell me how this ends." Can you tell us how this might have ended differently had there been a longer period of time at peak input levels? I mean, it's unfair at some level, but it's interesting.
Yeah. Well, I think in the absence of large-scale conflicts such as, and I like General Nagata's description, meteor strikes, if you had not had the meteor strike of the, if you had much more support from Pakistan, that would have helped substantially. If you would not have had several of the civilian crises, whether that was an errant tanker being blown up that caused a lot of civilian casualties, the private security companies incidents, the Kabul bank incidents, those meteors might have, if you, hypothetical would have been, what would have happened had you not had these meteor strikes? Could you have been more successful? And again, when you're trying to do this comprehensive counterinsurgency, it does not necessarily work on a timeline like that. And so you just continue to try to operate it as best you can for as long as it can be politically sustained.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, you are recognized for your question.
Thank you very much for your time today, and also for the written testimonies, which were indeed very rich, and I learned a lot. I wanted to address my question to Ambassador Liberi. Again, I appreciated your succinct summary of the civilian surge or the civilian uplift, that the operation is a success, but the patient died, that the inputs were largely achieved, there were a number of outputs, but the desired outcome wasn't achieved. And I also just wanted to echo, I think General Bolger just noted in terms of the numbers game, I think this also, I mean, I was doing research in Afghanistan at the time, just the tail wagging the dog, that, you know, counting numbers and the quantifiable outputs were much more easy to measure than the qualitative outputs. And so that leads me to sort of one overarching question, and then maybe one more specific one. And the overarching one is, again, whether you think the patient died or the civilian surge maybe failed to achieve its objectives primarily because the concept was deeply flawed, or was it because the concept was poorly implemented? So does stabilization work is maybe one thing, and if it doesn't, then all the fixes we can look at in the margins maybe is not a big conclusion that the Commission should be looking at in terms of recommendations forward. But it was the implementation problem, how could it be tweaked and improved moving forward? And then secondly, in your written testimony, you identified the tension between the short-term imperatives versus the long-term gains, and that both are important. And can you say a little bit more about how you balance the perceived needs for the fast, visible stabilization outcomes with the longer-term development goals? Because so often, those are in direct conflict or contradict one another. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the question. And I think this points to an important issue that we have to focus head-on. There are two countervailing priorities that we have to be aware of, and COINs stabilization focuses for the military and by default for the civilians on the district level. So clear, hold, build was a primary emphasis of stabilization at the district level, trying to get to the closest level of the population. The other point in reality, however, is that transition and stabilization in the Afghan context needed to take place at the provincial level. We had gone into this not doing an adequate analysis of the administrative systems of the Afghan government, and if we had done that, we would have realized very quickly that the capacity went from Kabul to the provinces, although frankly, even at varying levels of capacity. And it was difficult to go from the province level to the district level with the Afghan infrastructure. And so you can do stabilization, you can do COIN, you can use the military to help get to that clear, hold, build, and in the Operation Extreme Makeover, I think what was laudable about that is that the ANSF and the AMP actually did most of the clear, hold, and then we came in to do some of the build. And that resulted in perception on the part of the population that their government was serving them, their army, their police, and then ultimately, some of their district teams were helping to serve them with services. The problem is that a lot of that wound up being unsustainable, because the resources were coming from us, they were not going through the Afghan system, and there was very little tie-in often between the district and the provinces, and so the connections weren't there. And one of the things we have to focus on, on sustainability and transition, is helping those connections be made and to enable the kind of capacity development that is necessary so that when we do leave, there is something in place. And again, I would urge us all to look more closely at the lessons learned of going in with incorrect assumptions about how a system works and actually doing the hard work to figure out what is actually on the ground.
Thank you. Commissioner Mukapadhyay, you are recognized.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to our witnesses. And my question, I think, will follow on Dr. Wilder's. For the Ambassador Liberi and also for General Meese, please. I spent most of my time as a PhD student, and then afterwards, when I was doing fieldwork in Afghanistan, what was in RC East, and I first went there in 2007 and was last there in 2012, and watched the enormous amount of money and effort and expertise that was poured into that regional command, but also found myself by 2012 being told by my Afghan interlocutors that it was no longer safe for me to be there, even in Jalalabad at that point. So I think it gets at a real puzzle or a paradox of this period, which is just the enormous amount that was poured into this part of the country that would then not only succumb to the insurgency, but eventually become a center of gravity for the Islamic State. And I wonder how, if you can unpack a bit more for us, the relationship between the effort being made at the district level and at the provincial level with the conception of building back the legitimacy of the Afghan national government and the sense of being in partnership, things like PRTs and SERP funding? What was the logic in terms of the way in which that kind of enormous expenditure by Americans was going to translate into the Afghan population recognizing their own government as authoritative, as legitimate, as decisive?
Well, it's a very good question, and I think it is something that we frankly struggled with on the ground. You have to realize the enormous amount of resources. Mike mentioned, General Meese mentioned, 3.7 billion in SERP, coupled with 4 billion on the part of the embassy. So, you know, eight billion dollars practically going into a country that, you know, whose budget was one-eighth of that, maybe? And so these were issues that we struggled with, because often on the ground, people did see this as an American intervention and not an Afghan intervention. And so I think from the get-go, and it's one of the lessons that I've outlined in my paper and wanted to speak to here, we spend too much time doing and not enough time partnering. And even though we say this as a goal, we actually do not implement this on the ground, not because we don't want to, but because there is an imperative to spend the money, do the nose count, get things done, report up to Washington, answer to the IG, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we spend a lot of our time tied up in bureaucratic knots, feeding our own system to the detriment of actually achieving what it is we say we want to do on the ground. And here, I'd also like to make another point. We don't spend enough time also focusing on civil society from the beginning. You asked the question, well, how do the Afghans know that this is something that they're seeing from their government? And we need to develop those partnerships, again, from the get-go on the ground, not just with the Afghan government or any government that we work with, but with civil society so that the population sees that there is a feedback mechanism that they can touch and feel and go talk to. And it just doesn't happen as much as we need it to happen. I'll just give you one quick example. In trying to do the budgeting process from Kabul down to the province level and, you know, trying to make it get a little bit to the district level, there was a working group that focused on this, and there was a civil society group that we worked with that actually did the hard work of following the money. Where did it go to? This is the Afghan budget. Where did it go to? How was it used? Who did it benefit? And they did reports, and that was a feedback mechanism to the population, and that was the, you know, one of the few things that they could grab onto to see what was happening and how were they being serviced. We need to do more of that, and that is one of the lessons, key lessons that we need to learn.
Please, General Meese.
I'll just make two quick comments. First is, we use the term money as ammunition, and the interesting thing is sometimes when we foul up and you don't know where that money's going, it actually ended up going to Taliban, who were masquerading as contractors, so you were literally handing ammunition to your enemy. But I think in reference to RC East and Ambassador Liberi's But I think in reference to RC East and Ambassador Liberi's comment, there's a great paper written by then Colonel Randy George, he now happens to be the Chief Staff of the Army. His PRT chief was Dante Paradisio, and they used SERP as a budget. They actually handed it over to the Afghans, and what we found was small projects, 50,000 and under, are the ones that were successful. And so there have been some studies of SERP, of the ways to do it right, and a lot of ways that you can do it wrong. Nobody has compiled that into doctrine or policy for the United States government. I think that would be a very useful outcome for the Commission to at least consider.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, you are recognized for your question.
Thank you. Thank you all for a really rich discussion here. I have a question for Ambassador Wayne and a question for General Karimi. Ambassador Wayne, you made a point about timetables not being realistic, not being realistic for the achievement of our objectives or for US objectives. I think you could, if that's correct, then you could say that the conclusion you draw is either change your timetable or change your objectives, if you're trying to make them meet. And I think there was probably not so much of the latter happening, but I'm interested in your view. And in particular, in your long experience with the US government and US institutions, do you think that US institutions, political and policy institutions, are capable of a more longer-term perspective on policy in any kind of circumstances analogous to Afghanistan? And I don't say that to be overly critical. There are powerful forces that push in the direction of urgency and expediency, and there are political factors to consider. So is advocating a more long-term approach even realistic? And for General Karimi, you identified a number of important factors that you said led to the collapse of the Afghan state. I think those merit a lot of attention on our part. Is there anything you think the US could have done to mitigate or otherwise counter those factors related to political interference, nepotism, corruption, narcotics, very powerful forces indeed? Thank you.
Well, excellent questions. Yes, I think that if we were going to achieve the objectives we laid out, we had to have a longer time to do it. And that had to do with a lot of the civilian activities, a lot of the economic activities because they need to be protected and they needed to take shape. And I just think we couldn't do it in the short timeframe that we had, that if we had a few more years, build that buildup support, able to maintain a civilian force and then let transfer some of this activity from the military to civilians to let them do it, we could have seen better results. Maybe that's not possible, but in those cases, we shouldn't be trying to do development in the middle of a war. I mean, it's just really hard. And even back then, we argued that it was going to take four, six, eight years more to do this. And we argued from the embassy that you had to change your aid policies and have your aid policies be over a longer period of time to do that. We didn't win that argument. This was in 2009, beginning of 2010. So we went on and did our very best, but we think we would have had a much better chance of achieving some of those goals if we really were interested in doing them, if we planned for a longer period of time. Now, yes, we would have had to come back here and convince senators and congressmen and others that you needed more time, but I think you would have had a much better chance of success on the, both the military, the police, and the development goals and winning the support of Afghan people. Because, I mean, there are a lot of things we could look at here, but you could look at part of that shifting tenor in the country from 2010, 11, 12 on up, and you can show that the Taliban actually being more positively looked at because they were accusing the United States of abusing them. We can debate that and go through it, but that argument carried a lot. If we'd taken a longer-term approach, building these things up over time, building up support, we might have had a different outcome. We might not have, but anyway.
General Karimi?
Yeah. The collapse of the government, I think we can look at it from two points of view. First, inside the government and within the security forces, and also internationally, the role of the, particularly the role of the USA. And inside the government, I think from a longer period, there has been a slack in kind of complacency within the government, within the government offices and government forces, the security forces. In other words, there was no such enthusiasm that it used to be at the beginning of the training, the encouragement that they had. And this was the reason that the army were demoralized by having corruption within the, particularly within the leaderships. And in the same time, the political part of the government was also divided, fractions between the various elements of the government, particularly between the two factions, the ruling factions, the CEO and the president, each claiming their own powers and not trusting each other. And it had impact on the security forces and other government elements because there was so much interference politically within the army, within the security forces. And the same time, from my opinion, although I may not be correct what I am saying, I think there was a little control, I would say control or interference from the international community. As beginning, we had it through the advisors helping, assisting in this way, having more close relations, close impact on the morale and activities, daily activities of the armed forces as they had it at the beginning. But towards the end, I think that was also a little bit slow. There was less interest from the international community as well to help or correct the way the armed forces were going in the right direction. So in my opinion, these all caused to come to the end not to react when the Taliban were trying to reach Kabul. And that's what the time when the political setup was not there, the president had left, the ministers had left, the Minister of Defense, the Chief of Staff, all the other senior responsible bodies, they all had just run away, hiding, going to the airport to be able to get on any plane and leave the country. So the army, the soldiers, they were just left without any guidance, and they had to just go away. And as a result, the government fell, and the Taliban took over without a fight. So the actual reason for this, the main issues for these were, I think, in my opinion, corruption and bad leadership.
General Karimi, thank you. And this is a set of issues that we will return to as a Commission in another future hearing. So thank you for introducing them here. Very good question. Commissioner Jones, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all the witnesses. I want to ask a couple of questions to General Mies and pick up where Colin Jackson left off. So in addition to Afghanistan, as you mentioned, you also served on the Iraq surge planning team and served in Iraq. That effort was similar in many ways, a population-centric campaign. But I'm wondering, sort of three questions that sort of build on each other. One is, how do you compare and contrast the two, the efforts in Iraq and Afghanistan? Second, what were the results in your view of the respective campaigns? And then third is, what are the factors that impacted those results? And how do they play into it? For example, quality of the local security forces. So in the Afghan case, ANA, AMP, Afghan local police, sanctuary issue, the quality of the local government, the government and its ability to deliver services, corruption, geography, even other wild cards, AQIs, sort of overzealous violence against Iraqi tribes. How do you weigh those factors as you're looking at Afghanistan?
Let me do, I'll take those in order and try to go through them pretty quickly. There are some similarities in that both are comprehensive counterinsurgency campaigns. Both of the problems with both of the counterinsurgency, comprehensive counterinsurgency campaigns is that the enemy that you're fighting, the insurgency that you're fighting, has external support in Iraq or from AQI, when you were talking about the Iraq situation, with the Taliban support from Pakistan in the Afghanistan situation. On the other hand, when you compare it, there are huge differences. Ambassador Liberi talked a little bit about the governance and the role in Iraq. You had too much government, too much of a Saddam bureaucracy pervading all kinds of things, and obviously the three different factions. In Afghanistan, you had probably too little government in that the government managed Kabul and might have reached down a little bit to the provinces and to the districts, but you had a lot less government. Obviously, you had a lot less economic base in Afghanistan, so you had that, you could never build that up in the same way that you did with the oil revenue that you have in Iraq. So you're dealing with very different environments, even though you're doing a comprehensive counterinsurgency campaign in both. Second, in terms of the results, by 2011, the Comprehensive Counterinsurgency Campaign had really built it up to the point where the violence in Iraq had gotten down to a level where it could have been relatively effectively handled by the Iraqi security forces. The last time I was in this room with Ambassador Crocker was when he and General Petraeus were testifying at the same table about that. And at that point, President Obama made the decision to allow the forces to take another, really three years to get out of the country, from 2009 to 2011. And that was enough time to be able to build up the security forces at that time. In Afghanistan, you had a much more limited result, and frankly, you had a functioning Afghan Iraqi army beforehand, and so it was replacing people, building that back up. In Afghanistan, and police force for that matter, in Afghanistan, you were really building it from scratch, as General Bulger talked about, just numeracy training, literacy training, those kinds of things before you could even get weapons, was much more of a step that had to take place and was much harder to do in a compressed period of time.
So just to end then briefly, if, just looking at that, what variables that made Afghanistan different, do you believe in retrospect we could have done differently?
I'm not sure if there was some way to, I think, if you would have had a comprehensive approach to the advisors. For example, if we had advisory and assistance brigades, which as General Bulger mentioned, came in in 2017, and you had been able to continue to embed them further down. It really, in order to be able to fight the kinds of insurgency that the Afghan army is now fighting, it's very difficult to do with the capacity they have unless you have American people continue to be embedded in there.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardig, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, and thank you everybody for your service. My question is for Ambassador Wayne. And on the last panel, we heard a lot of discussion about the 18-month timeframe and what that did to our Afghan partners and their perception of our willingness to really be there for the long haul. It seems to me that you had a slightly different challenge, which is, you know, you're administering and in many cases signing up for longer-term commitments, whether those are through, you know, various economic support efforts. And yet I wonder, how do those two interact? Were you, did you feel from your Afghan partners, a sense that that 18-month window also applied to our development and our aid projects as well?
No, I think they thought the 18-month window was not including development assistance. I think they thought that was going to continue for a long period of time from the United States and from other partners. And that on the security side, they would be providing more of their own security during that period of time. And that the national government would obtain during that period more capacity to be present in the rural areas as well as the semi-rural areas, very important in doing that. And that we never really got to that, those timeframes, I think, going forward. And we did not develop the civilian structure that could take that forward for a long period of time and covering gradually increasing geographic areas. Rather, we started losing areas, control of that. And there are a lot of reasons for that, but basically, we didn't have an overall approach that added to the substance of authorities bringing not just military and not just police, but actually economic benefits to people in the countryside. And you needed to do all of that, I think, going forward. And we could have had a different, you could take a different approach to Afghanistan in doing it, and it would not necessarily have been as developed a government or as developed a structure going forward. But that's not what we started off on. And then we just sort of, as you saw, it just sort of collapsed aside from the main urban areas near the end, sadly.
And so if I understand correctly, there was the perception at that time, that time being that when the military surge was announced and all the civilian resources that went with that, that in the longer term, Afghans would be able to step up and provide the security necessary to facilitate the continued implementation of those projects?
Yes. I think the assumption was that they would take over more of the security role, but working on that longer timeframe, I think, not in the two or three years that we were looking at, but if you would establish it for two years, four years, six years beyond, that you would have parallel evolution of both the security presence of the government, civilian presence, of the education and health presence, and that these would all be moving ahead. And the United States would not have to be stuck in the position that they were in to begin with, of providing so much assistance on the military side. But that was a very ambitious objective, and it would encourage continued involvement and continued money flows. And as we saw, that's just not the way things developed.
Thank you. I yield the remainder of my time.
Commissioner Feda, you are recognized.
Great, thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and being in front of us today here at the Commission. My questions are for General Karimi. Sir, both you're written in your oral testimony, you go in great detail about essentially how the ANSF was never in a position to succeed because of conditions. Three quick questions for you, and I'm not sure the right order, but I'll say them regardless. First is, and we heard this in the first panel, if we just focus on the period of 2009 to 2011, what effect, if any, did the 18-month announcement or timetable have on the ANSF's morale? Question two, who was the enemy the ANSF was being trained against? You go in great detail about a bunch of the problems, but at the end of the day, who was the enemy that was being trained against? And then number three, again, a lot of folks, either through hindsight or reservations, were able to outline the problems they saw writ large during the surge. But did you, sir, ever have, feel you had that opportunity to raise these kind of concerns with ANSF training and some of the conditions to either General Bulger or other members of ISAF or even within your own government? Those are my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, the 18-month period of the surge, I think before the surge, it was felt that extra forces needed because the enemy was very aggressive in that period, and as we all understood that is an insurgency. The enemy could easily disappear when he was under pressure. The people, the local people were, and this time mainly leaned toward the Taliban, supporting them or at least hiding them. And the reason for that, we can talk about it, why the people changed side to be more sympathetic with the Taliban. The army was very happy when the surge was there because there was too much pressure on ANA and NSF as a whole to hold their ground in various parts of the country. So that surge really eased the pressure on them because they had to fight the international community, the US forces were fighting, extra fighting, extra pressure on the enemy that eased the pressure on the NSF, and they were happy with this. But later on, when they knew that they are leaving, and particularly when they start leaving, of course, they demoralized it again because they thought the enemy will be defeated and they will have, you know, no much pressure from the enemy. But it came again to square one, you know? There was not actually a kind of slowness in the fight. Morale became weaker, even the international community itself would, as I mentioned in my remark, they were disappointed because they were also under pressure, you know? The NATO nations were not as much helping in the fight as the US involved itself, both US as fighting Al Qaeda and also US in the form of NATO. They were the one under pressure. Then the NATO nation, most of them were not very much involved in their own areas, they were just looking, if the enemy attacked them, they will defend, otherwise they will not take in the fight. Of course, the enemy was known, enemy was the enemy was the Taliban who had sanctuaries in Pakistan, and they were, they could both hide within the community in the countryside because their appearance without weapon was not easy to identify as an enemy. They would just look on people, they blended with the people very easily. And for training and for rest, for treatment, they would go to sanctuaries in Pakistan. So enemy was clear, the enemy, in my opinion, was the Taliban from the very beginning. As come to my opinions, of course, I had, from the time when we started ANA and I, from 2003 onwards, when I was appointed as the G3, I had my opinion with the groups of the CCC Alpha, with General Bulger, with General Rikenberry, General Colwell, you know, all the people who were involved, I used to give my opinion, particularly, particularly on the support elements of the ANA, because ANA by itself was a very light infantry force. It didn't have the capabilities that we needed, and the capabilities were the real challenge, like the firepower, the logistic, the air force, the intelligence, all these things were really necessary for ANA. So ANA was a very light force, more equivalent to the police force in the country, and they were not in a position to fight against an enemy who was infiltrating from another country. So inside Afghanistan, they were effective, more better effective than the police, but they had their own challenges. So in relation to the training of the army, the setup of the army, the structure of the army, the way we were dealing with ANA, I had my opinions. My opinions were heard sometimes, but they were not implemented as I wished to be done. For example, from the very beginning, with the structure of the enemy started from bottom up, battalion and then battalion, then brigade and corps, but there were no headquarters. I know that there shouldn't be a vice headquarters for the whole army, but there should have been some elements in the command level to at least to have accountability of the equipment, accountability of the fuel and so on. We didn't have that. Everything was done by CCC Alpha, by the advisors, and the advisors had their own files. After a certain time, they would go back to their own country, somebody else would replace them. So keeping the account, in my opinion, was not the right thing, and many people misuse the resources, particularly the fuel.
General Kareemee, we are at time, so I ask you to please complete the thought.
Okay, you know, there was so much misuse of the resources in the very beginning, there was no control over them.
Thank you. Commissioner Crocker, you are recognized.
Thank you, and it's great to see so many old friends here or fellow unindicted co-conspirators, depending on your viewpoint. I'd like to follow up on that line of questioning. General Bulger, you said in your testimony that we tried to do too much ourselves. The Afghan, our Afghan counterparts knew what they wanted. They knew what their fellow Afghans would accept. If you had all this to do over again, and by that, I mean not just your own time, but going back to, say, the surge itself, 2009, what sort of security assistance program would you have designed to meet your criticism of the one that we actually implemented? And General Kareemee, I'll have that same question for you.
Thanks, Ambassador Crocker. Great to see you again, and that's, the question you asked there, I think, is the question for security assistance, and that is, it's got to be Afghan-led. It has got to be Afghan-led. And you just heard from General Kareemee, who, when I was there, was the chief of staff, the chief of the general staff for the Afghan military, and he was basically being told how to organize and how to supervise his own army. I think we should have advised and assisted that. I know that we have a challenge then in terms of money. He mentioned fuel, food, ammunition, all those things got to be accounted for if they're paid for by the US taxpayer. So we were doing a good job of counting for it, okay, yay us. The challenge was, we weren't empowering our Afghan counterparts to run their army the way they needed to run it. And it would not have been done the way we did it. I don't think they would have recruited the same way we did. I'm not sure they would have organized their forces the same way that we told them to organize. Their school system might have looked different, several other things as well. But I think the biggest thing for us is we had an opportunity early in that surge to turn to the Afghans and say, what kind of military, what kind of police do you want? And when they told us, we couldn't listen to them. Instead, I can tell you, at least when I got there, I had a plan from Washington, and it was force issue, and we were going to make that plan work. And our goal was to execute that plan. And frankly, General Kareemee and I both had questions about it, and we were sort of told, there's no time for questions, you got to just get these troops in the field and get them fed, get them fueled, all that, okay. But the result was, we ended up with an unsustainable force. So, sir, I think your question is well taken, and at that, I'll turn over to General Kareemee for his comments.
Yes, General Kareemee, your thoughts on what kind of army and police force you actually wanted versus the one we gave you?
You see, Ambassador, the army that I want or Afghans want, it is something like, you know, good wishes for a thing that could not be possible. You see, when you are talking about army, building an army, you have to look at the resources needed for it. So if I want to have an army of 200,000 and I can't afford it, I can't have it. And this is the reason that the resources or the money to be spent was considered to have the army initially only 70,000. Even on that, there was an argument at that, that it should be reduced because it was started, the enemy is defeated, and a big force is not needed for internal security, a small force is enough, world trends. But again, we settled for 70,000, but when things developed, the CCC Alpha or the US government, I would say, decided to increase the 70,000. And this is what we wanted. And finally, we reached 195,000, and we wanted something like 230, 240. Towards the end, I wasn't in the army in that time, I think, and went to 200, 230,000 because the two brigades from the Ministry of Interior came to the army. So my wishes would be an army to be capable of fighting the enemy and also have all the capabilities like firepower and so on. If we look at the structure of the ANA, we had only one battery, one battery of artillery in each brigade, eight guns, which was not enough, you know? So when we're thinking about an army that can support itself, it must have mobility, it must have firepower, and also air force, which is a big, important asset, and a very expensive one. So what I want to have it cannot be done because of the resources constraint.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashley, you are recognized.
So thanks to the panel for being with us today, and I don't know if you remember, but back in 2012, for 14 months, I was the ISAF J2, and I got to go to a bi-weekly meeting. And there was this impressive Afghan general that went to those meetings all the time. And one of my lasting impressions of my time there was just this incredibly professional soldier, his name was Kareemee. He doesn't look a day older. I don't know if you remember me, I probably look a little bit older than the last 12 years that have passed, but thanks for the example, thanks for your professionalism, and I didn't get to say goodbye when I left in 2013, so it is so good to see you here. Although having been said, my question is for General Bulger. So for General Bulger, you had the opportunity to work the security assistance mission in Iraq, clearly some lessons learned that you brought into Afghanistan. We've kind of unpacked a number of things and the challenges. We talked about the desertion rates. It was a volunteer multi-ethnic. Can you kind of unpack a little bit about the multi-ethnicity issues and the challenges and what that meant to filling a force? Because we knew a lot of these kids, when they would go on leave, they didn't come back. And then, you know, the Afghan local police was, in ways, a remedy to being, you know, localizing some of the forces. But, you know, when you make recommendations for how do we redesign a force, everyone's going to be unique to the nation that it's in. But what are your biggest takeaways for what a design would look like for an Afghan force? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Great to see you, and I think what I would do, again, able to revisit it, we would have asked General Kareemee and the other Afghan leaders what type of force recruitment they would want. You mentioned, of course, we know the various ethnic groups in Afghanistan, the Pashtun plurality, the Tajik minority, the Hazara, the Uzbek, the Turkmen, all these different groups. And of course, the challenge was that in this army, which you already have to teach people how to read and write and how to do their numbers, you also have to deal with the fact that your force speaks two different languages, that orders, field manuals, instruction has to be given in both Dari and Pashto. And that, you know, again, it's hard enough to do military stuff, but when you also have a communication challenge, that's a challenge. The other thing is, the military in Afghanistan was nationally assigned. So you mentioned the Afghan local police, very successful. In fact, you know, as an intel guy on our side, the Taliban were very, very concerned about the Afghan local police. It was, they identified it as the most dangerous force in the allied order of battle because of what it represented in terms of control of the villages. But they were locally recruited, and the police were locally recruited, except for a few of their higher formations, their equivalents of a SWAT team or whatever. But the army was mixed. So when you go to an army battalion, it would have people from all over the country. There'd be Pashtuns from the east, Pashtun from the south, Hazara from the central part of the country, Tajik from the northeast, all that, all mixed in together. That has some good in terms of making the nation work together, but it also takes a lot of time, creates challenges for the officers and non-commissioned officers. And I wonder, looking back on it, and I know that President Karzai specifically was very, very concerned about local warlordism, as he called it, or local units building up their own militias. But I'll tell you, looking back on it, it seems to me that a more natural setup for Afghanistan would have been something akin to our US National Guard, where units are recruited in their hometown, they all share the same language, they all come from the same area, they form a battalion or brigade, they train there, and then they can be moved around after that, but at least they come from a common background. That's a pretty common recruitment pattern from the 19th and early 20th century in a lot of European countries. You know, you think of the Cadi regiments in Great Britain, you think of how the Germans did it in both world wars. So it's not like it's a bad system, we've certainly used it too. I don't know if that would have survived contact with the Karzai government. My thought, Bob, is probably not. But what we did, in fact, created a huge leadership challenge for the young officers and non-commissioned officers, as well as the older ones in the Afghan forces.
Okay, sir, thanks. Good to see you again, and I yield back.
Thank you. I wanted to use this gavel one last time, but I don't have to, actually. We have ended on time. I want to thank our witnesses for their contributions today, for your service and for your leadership. It means a lot to us that you took the time to think back on the past two decades, to share your feedback with us, and I hope we can continue the conversation. You are dismissed. Commissioners, you are not dismissed yet. I just wanted to, you're welcome to stay for closing remarks as well to the witnesses, but I wanted to offer just a free, a few brief closing remarks, just by way of observations from today. This discussion of the surge has obviously raised as many questions as it attempted to resolve, and I'll just pose a few of them for the Commission's forward kind of research and learning that we plan to do. When we think of the surge, that, you know, begs the question, did it alter the trajectory of the war or did it defer the hard choices that we eventually had to come to make? Was there a consistent understanding of how the military efforts supported the political aims? This will be a key question for us to think through as the next hearing will actually look at reconciliation and talking with the Taliban, which we alluded to today but did not get into depth. We mentioned Iraq several times, both as commissioners and also as witnesses, so to what extent did we adapt those lessons from Iraq into the Afghan context? And under which circumstances was that, did that make sense? And in which cases did it not translate so cleanly? I think it begs the question, given that we were one force operating in two theaters. And something that we haven't talked enough about is how did the Taliban see US actions or even Afghan government actions? And so while the US forces escalated operations, did the Taliban see the, our tempo as a different kind of opportunity, if you will? And so we hope to spend more time digging into that next hearing and in the course of our research. I think all of these issues, we hope, will invite further examination in the public space as well. These are not retrospective concerns. As we mentioned this morning, the, looking at the lessons of the past are very much issues that are alive today. And so, you know, we hope that this work continues to live on beyond kind of the number of hearings we do and our final report. And word on the final report, I appreciate that today we thought through the decisions and debates of the moment, but also the witnesses took a lot of care and concern to think about the long-term reflections, and that will indeed inform the report. And several of you mentioned that you have family members who serve, and these are good guides for them as well as they go off into future theaters. And so the report will be both a narrative arc of the engagement, but also very practical lessons of what not to do next time or what works and what to do next time. So with that, thank you for being part of this essential conversation. We look forward to reconvening in the fall for our next hearing on post-surge transition to Afghan security lead and political reconciliation processes. to Afghan security lead and political reconciliation processes. With that, I'd like to also recognize my co-chair and friend, Dr. Colin Jackson, who has been instrumental in shaping kind of the, the research and the work that we've been doing together with me and this amazing staff that we have. So kudos to the staff as well. But Colin, over to you for some closing remarks.
Thank you, Shmila, and thank you for taking the harder of the two jobs, which is enforcing time limits on multiple erudite speakers. I would say it's clear from this panel and the one that preceded it that the sum of the testimony was greater than the parts. And we've been enormously fortunate to begin to scratch the surface of the knowledge of the people who came here today to speak with us about the surge. In no particular order, I had several observations. One, I think Mr. Sedney was very good in pointing out that it's easy to overlearn what went wrong from failures, that we ought to be thinking about what went right or what might be useful moving forward if we found ourselves in similar circumstances. And some of these discussions about security force assistance are clearly an example of that, but not the only. Second, I'm struck by the sort of rituals of American civil military bargaining. The surge is a story in part of what was debated, which was largely time, money, and troops. What's interesting is what was less debated, which are sort of the ways in which those research sources were applied, and still less so, whether or not it was meaningful to revise our ends. That is something that's interesting to me, at least as we look towards the report. As much as the substantive debates were there, what was in the background, and it crept out several times in the first panel, were the mutual suspicions of soldiers and statesmen about what was going on in this bargaining process. And I think we should treat that, obviously, in the, in the final report. A third theme, Afghan politics. We were extremely selective, it seems to me, as Americans, in what we cared about in Afghan politics. We had very pronounced opinions about particular leaders, about political systems and designs, about how the Afghans should be organized in various forms and fashions. But we were relatively uninterested, it seems to me, in the larger political struggles, what the word came out today, civil war that was going on between a faction we were siding with and a faction that was on the outside. Signals sent and signals heard. We spent a lot of time talking about the timeline announcement by the Obama administration, but what struck me was it was one public signal with multiple audiences. We hoped the Afghans would step up, the US military would be more urgent, that Pakistan would understand we were serious, and that the public would understand that we were engaged in some replication of the successes we had seen in Iraq. It seems to me the signals heard were quite different. Pakistan said, maybe you're leaving quickly, you're not serious. The Afghans had a mix of, maybe you're in, maybe you're out. The military, I think, was understandably disturbed by the sense of, have we got enough time and stuff to get this done? Hard not to miss another theme of time and expectations, the clash here between civilians who are impatient with multiple problems and leaders on the ground who are transfixed by how long it takes to get this kind of stuff done. One final observation, we did a veterans panel that preceded this hearing, and the consistent theme that emerged from ground-level people, the tactical level, was the degree to which they had not been trained to do the kinds of things they were being asked to do, but rather were thrust into these roles. For every General Mies, who's a PhD economist, there were many, many, many Americans trying to figure out how to do things they had never done before, be an advisor, be an economic agent in the Afghan context. So part of our job will be to pass on not just these Olympian insights, but things that might be useful to people in similar circumstances again. So thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Could I ask the staff of the Commission to just, if your staff, please raise your hand, I want to recognize your hard work for... Don't be shy. They have been working for weeks on this hearing, so I really appreciate it. And this hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.